Look like you're ready to go play some too.
I don't know, there you go.
I don't think I could do that.
How are you feeling tonight?
Okay.
Better than last time, hope?
Much, much better than last time, thank you. Sorry that I missed out on all the fun, but I did listen to it all that.
Well, it went long as you know. I'm sorry for you. Hi, Mike.
Hello.
Oh, hi, Mike.
This is for future, talking about the moderate income housing plan.
Awesome.
Got some strategies there that we can.
Perfect.
Well, how's it go?
Say it went well, but it just got more difficult.
Oh, really?
Saw the act of errors. I got, you know, one of those long, driving tees.
Compared to the shorter driving tees.
That's in this leg, shorter ones in this leg.
Oh, you returned my pen?
You returned it to airport security?
Yeah.
Really? Dig, have to dig to find it. That doesn't sound good. No fun. How you doing? Good, you? Good afternoon.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Summer treating you well, or almost summer?
Well, yeah, busy with kids and grandkids going different places. I had one granddaughter that just moved.
Away or here?
Moved away, so I've been helping her.
To where, how far away?
Just up to Salt Lake.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not terribly far, but.
And she was here in Ivan?
She was actually in Las Vegas, so she moved from Las Vegas to.
Okay, so a little further away, but it's still a day trip.
Yeah, so just the fun of moving.
Hey, Cade.
Hey, Mike, how's it going?
Good.
So we did an experiment with a AV system to see why the monitors about over there. So they replaced the two hardware pieces on your guys' side on your side. So these three monitors might work out tonight, and yours might be good to see if it's the hardware or if it's the wiring or whatnot. So we're slowly getting to the end of it, or the bottom of it.
A control test, huh?
Yeah, so that guy or one of these, they did a switcheroo and hoping it works.
Okay.
Hi, Neil.
Thank you, you what? Adele's here. Adele, yeah, Adele, yes. She's been taking care of her dad, she said. He's getting old. Not even old yet, I don't think. Which one of these locks that thing? That says four twenty-eight on my.
Mine does too. Hasn't changed the time.
Yeah, we're in Nevada. See Jenny? Yesterday, Colby.
How fun, you're just getting them left and right now, aren't you?
That's probably all it gets, I better enjoy it.
How fun.
I keep it overnight. He was eight pounds fifty knots, he's twenty inches.
Wow.
His mom's just a little gal.
My goodness.
Cade, did you get Zoom to work?
They grow fast, don't they?
Yes, they do. My youngest grandbaby is almost four.
See, my oldest is five.
So go figure.
My oldest is seventeen.
Zoom's working when there's no public hearing.
Yeah. That's okay, you get to enjoy him now.
Except I'm too old.
No, you're not.
Some days I feel like it.
We all do.
I assume Dennis is planning on being here, I haven't heard.
I think that's him right there.
No, that's a guardian, all right. Or is he in front of her?
Yep.
Oh, there he is, yeah.
All right, who's the oldest?
So the way I feel, I think, don't think we make it long.
What's that?
The way I feel, I don't think we make it long.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to our city council meeting held this Thursday evening, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We welcome those who are here. We may have some that will join by Zoom, so welcome to you, and the YouTube option will be available as well. We'll begin by recognizing that we have a quorum of our council members here, therefore we can conduct the business that is before us on tonight's agenda. We'll begin with a flag sluitinum location led in that by Councilmember Anderson. Please, those who are here, stand and join with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind of gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this evening here in our Ivan City Council meeting, giving you thanks for this beautiful area we live in and for the enjoyment of life we have. We thank you for those people that surround us and ask you to bless and protect them. We thank you for all those that serve and help our lives, like the firemen and the police and all those that go out in the Army and bless them and their families and help them in the things that they need. Blessed is this evening as we have discussion that we can be open-minded and we'll be able to come up with the best answer. These things we ask for and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. All right, pulling the council now to determine if we have any conflicts of interest, beginning with Councilmember Scott.
No conflicts.
Councilmember Mayor?
No conflicts.
Councilmember Johnson?
No conflicts.
Councilmember Anderson?
There's two items I'd wanna, they're not directly related to me, but they are, is I've dealt with them, is the development agreement for Desert Cove and then the reimbursement agreement with the city.
Thank you. And I have no conflicts. Councilmember Adele Murphy is excused this evening, so we'll go on with the four of us, yes?
And Mayor, I have something at eleven PM tonight, so if we could, I'll have to leave at that time in the agenda.
And so will most of them.
Halfway through the meeting?
I'm at six thirty, just so you know.
I'm sorry. We saved the really tough stuff till eleven when we're all pretty flexible. All right, beginning with our department reports, building, the building department, Mike?
Mayor, council, so I've been asked to look into doing a survey monkey for different land use situations.
Would you check and see if that mic's on, so it's recording?
I don't see green light.
How about this? Does that work?
Yeah. Yeah, that's on.
I think this one's working too. Okay, I just need to get closer. So we have the ability already to do surveys, so we had done one already for the internet fiber cable, so we can do surveys anytime we would like to on our website. Cade got about two hundred-ish respondents last time we did a survey. So anytime we feel like we should, we could go ahead and survey our citizens on what they think about different land use scenarios.
So Mike, specifically going into this planning commission discussion on the general plan, that's when I would really like to see a survey go out. Actually, Lisa was sitting here, Lisa Gans, came to me with that suggestion. I think that's a good one because we've grown a lot since the last time we reviewed the general plan, and I think that's a great way to get, whether it's Survey Monkey or ourselves, Survey Monkey had a cost attached to it and maybe we can do an effective job on our own, but one way or the other, I'd like to work with whomever would like to be a part of it, to put together a series of questions that would lead folks, lead our residents to comment on what their thoughts are about the general plan and the city moving forward.
What I believe would be effective is every time we have a planning commission meeting, ask the planning commissioners to come up with a question or two that they would like us to put up for their education on.
Yeah, I think they ought to be a part of it, for sure.
So maybe they could put our own questions on, but maybe give the assignment to also the planning commission to come up with questions that they would like input on.
I'd like to be in the middle of that, too, probably have Lisa check it over for us, make sure we got everything, I mean, from the citizen's point of view.
Yeah, and anybody could send us a question, we'll put it on for them.
Now, that's a great idea for those who are tuned in. Send us your questions, not all of them would be possible to include, I doubt, but.
Yeah, and then we could put it on Survey Monkey and put it up for a couple of weeks and report it planning commission, what the results were.
Yeah, I think it's a great way to get our finger on the pulse of our community. Thank you, continue.
Okay, so I've talked with staff, my staff about water education for contractors. Now that we've passed the bill, we're gonna start working with contractors while we're doing inspections with them, and we'll also get a letter out that includes the water bill to all the contractors and start educating them, talking to them about what their responsibilities are.
Talking about our conservation ordinance.
Yes, the conservation ordinance, so we're figuring out what water-wise is, so we went online and found a bunch of fixtures that were water-wise, so the products are out there, and so we just need to educate ourselves on what those projects, products are and figure out how to verify compliance.
Yes, Dennis.
And that's across multiple vendors, companies, it's not a sole source kind of thing, water-wise, right?
Yeah, so Moen has some, Kohler has some. Yeah, we looked online and all these products came up in our Google search, and so we're educating ourselves and we're gonna educate the contractors too, so.
I think it's like the efficiency rating on a new appliance and whatever, I think it specifically states on the appliance that it's rated, that it's water-wise qualified, I believe.
So it's not like a labeling for compliance, it is on a box, so for us to verify compliance, we need to have the box on site or a normal fixture so we could look online to make sure that it's correct, but hopefully the contractors will be on board and look into themselves on the products that they use, because this means that they can continue with construction, so I'm hoping that they take this on and realize that it's important to them too, not just us.
That was part of what the, if you remember, part of what the district recommended in their sample ordinance, so I think that part of it's been adopted across most of the county, so contractors who are working in multiple locations will be confronted with that kind of everywhere.
I'll be talking to the other building officials here in a couple of weeks at a meeting, and I thought we could get a class together, maybe through the water district, maybe set up something so we can all understand these new products better, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've all talked and we'll continue the discussion.
Thank you.
And then third, I passed out a paper from the workforce services, that's for our future discussion on moderate income housing. It gives strategies in there, the planning commission has it in front of them, and I just thought I'd give it to you guys so you can get as much heads up on those strategies too. So we've gone through them, we've looked at them, Chuck's actually rated them, I think he did an excellent job, but there's some things in there that are pretty informative on this, yes, pretty informative on the direction we should go towards moderate housing. That's coming to you in the future, I thought, giving it to you sooner than later would be proactive. Any questions?
Counsel?
How many permits do we have for the year?
Printed that out, but I left it on the printer. Should be, is it in the report, you want me to pull it up?
Sure.
Residential permits are forty-four for single family.
For this year?
For this year, yeah, after January first.
So the fiscal year is the twenty-two starts in July, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so if you are the fiscal year number, it's at the bottom of the report.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you, Mike, stick around.
I'm here all night.
Hopefully not. Could've said that last time in a minute. Going to Public Works and Engineering, Chuck, welcome.
All right, I gotta use this, right?
No, the other works.
Hello, hello, does work, okay. I'll just sit in the chair and use this if you want. That would be okay, with me at least. Hello, good to see you. Couple things I want to report on, first off, and I think, I think we kind of talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, but I don't know that, I gave an official report on it, but we received notice that Stewart's office, Congressman Stewart's office has included a two million dollar earmark for Old Highway ninety-one in the request that's gonna go forth for a, for that infrastructure build that they're working on in the Capitol right now. I don't have any information of like how likely it is for that bill to get passed or how likely it is for the earmark to stay on. I did talk to somebody at UDOT who thought that if they did pass the bill, that the earmark would stay, and so if we get that two million dollar earmark, Cade starts like doing a little jig and a little dance and gets super excited because it solves a big problem that we've been talking about here for a long time, and so just wanted to make sure you guys had as much information as I have, and that's all the information I have on that right now. We've also advertised for an RFP to redo our storm drain master plan and our sewer master plan with the potential that it could impact our water and secondary water master plans as well. Technically, that's four master plans, we're really only doing two master plans, the storm drain master plan and the sewer master plan, both of those need to be updated right away, but if the sewer master plan, if we decide that we want to take the sewer water and build our own treatment plant like we've discussed and we've done a feasibility study, you know, if we decided to do that, it would change what we're doing on the water and secondary water master plans, and so we may have to update those a little bit too.
You were here at the last meeting, were you?
Yeah, okay. Anyway, so I just wanted to let you know, the RFP is out, it's actually, we should be receiving proposals on the RFP tomorrow. I am having a little trouble getting interest on those RFP, on the RFP, I've got interest from Bowen Collins, which did our last ones, but I'm having trouble getting more interest in it than Bowen Collins, I'll just mention that. But anyway, hopefully the next council meeting, we are having a council meeting on July seventh, is that right? That hasn't been canceled, right? So hopefully the July seventh council meeting, we'll be bringing forward a request to prove that expenditure for that.
So Chuck, a question. So Bowen Collins that did the last one, they then have in their possession a lot of data and information that wasn't necessarily included in the report, right?
Well, the big advantage is they have models, and that's where they get kind of a leg up on everybody else's, they did last, the last models. Anybody else that comes in, if they want to redo the model, you know, they have a risk if they just take their model and just use it because they haven't verified everything and, you know, decided that they're, you know, if they're willing to be responsible for that, I guess they can make that professional decision, but there is an advantage in the fact that they've got the model, they can run the models, and they don't have to do any additional work, and so there is some cost savings to them if they, if we use them for these proposals. But we'll just see who we get and we'll score them and then we'll come forward and we'll present what our recommendation is. One other thing I was gonna mention, I've told the mayor this, that I've been attending committee meetings at the water district on a drought response plan, they've got some funding to do that, they're putting together a kind of a criteria of actions that we would probably have to take if we go into different levels of drought stage. Right now, every city's kind of got their own thing, and I don't know that it's very sophisticated, and they want to kind of take it to a higher level of sophistication, they've actually got their own models that they're doing where they're trying to project, you know, what's gonna happen to our water storage if, you know, we have certain drought stages. Right now, we're actually in a really terrible drought right now, but our storage levels are pretty high, and so, you know, we haven't had to go through any restrictions yet this year, but, you know, if we continue having the drought into next year, who knows? But just want to let you know, I'm attending those committee meetings, it's on a technical basis, at some point, I think we'll be getting the council involved and you'll be wanting to get some more information on that, so I'll be trying to just feed information to you as I get it and kind of give you a heads up of when the council might have to take some sort of action on this response plan. Then the last thing I wanted to bring up was, we're pretty much done with our pavement maintenance program, there is still striping going on, you might see like a stripe here or a stripe there, they seem to be kind of piecemealing the work. We've told them they've got to get it done before the end of the fiscal year, and they've been coming, I think, at night, and you probably haven't even seen them because you've been asleep while they've been doing a lot of the striping, but we're getting a lot of striping done, and that's kind of the last piece of our pavement management plan. So that's all I have, if you've got some questions, I'm happy to stand here as long as you want me to.
Thanks for the written reports, they have a lot of detail on it, we can look at it for you too. Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Chuck. Cade, you're up. Been seeing a lot of you tonight.
Hopefully not too much, but if that two million dollar does go through, we all should be dancing, not just me, so. Fourteen days left in the fiscal year, so I sent you where we're at through the end of May, revenues continue to outpace our budget, and there's a few departments where we'll have to amend, and we'll talk about that here pretty shortly, due to overtime, inflation, fuel prices going up, and even though the fiscal year is ending in the next fourteen days, we have until August to close the books in terms of we'll continue to receive revenue, tax revenue up until August, and then as well, we have sixty days after year end to continue to backdate invoices for services that were done in fiscal year twenty-two. But things are proceeding normally, and any questions on that report?
Counsel? Nope. Sweet, well, I'll sit down and come back up. Thank you. Pam, you're the one I see here from the planning commissioner, are you planning on giving the report? Thank you, Pam Guardiol.
Hello, everyone, it's nice to see you. I don't blind myself in the process.
Yeah, get close to that if you would.
Is that better?
That's good.
Okay. Keep nodding if it's right, otherwise. Let me move some notes here. Is that okay still? From Tuesday night, there were three final plat reviews, all of which were approved. One was for Desert Cove at two hundred North Cavassa Drive, another one at Black Desert Resort Road Dedication, again approved, and the last one at Black Desert Resort Phase One also approved. Those were the only plat reviews that we looked at that evening. The other thing was, as Mike referred to, the medium income housing, and I'd like to refer you to this hundred forty-page house bill, which number I always forget, four sixty-two, and I took the opportunity to read the document, and I was grateful when there was duplication so I could see the context and read on, and so as Mike has pointed out, he has given the commission the list of strategies, we are to have three strategies on how we will continue to address moderate income housing. We discussed the possibility of looking at low hanging fruit, and I was glad to hear, Chuck, that you've already. prioritized or looked at some references for this. I would, I would love to see your own little reading. That would be wonderful. So we will be prepared at the next meeting to, uh, look at those and come up with some recommendations. One of the other things, uh, I found as I was reading the document was the reference to the general plan. And of course, uh, as you well know, the commission has been charged with reviewing the general plan. And at this point, we have, uh, invested the time in zoning and land use. And, uh, I had the opportunity to meet with the mayor today, and he made an excellent point that I think my, my instinct was feeling, but you articulated it so beautifully. And that is, uh, there, and these are my words, not yours, but this is the instinct that I had, that there is an urgency for us to move on the other parts of the plan because the ground underneath us in this community is moving. And we want to make sure that the plan against which our decisions are being made is the most current one. And so we have asked staff to come back to us with, uh, three things. First is a draft or a straw schedule of how we will proceed through the rest of the general plan. And it is straw. We will discuss it so that there is some form and function about how we are moving forward on that. Uh, the phrase that comes to mind for me is if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. And so some structure, I think, at least will give this, uh, anal retentive firstborn, some structure on where and how we're moving forward. Secondly, also, as you have discussed, Mayor, this evening and Mike as well, a draft strategy for multi-level methodology for citizen input, whatever that may look like. Uh, we're not, uh, looking for overkill, uh, but rather two things. One, that citizens feel that they have had an opportunity to use their voice, whether they choose to or not, is totally up to them. But secondly, so that our decision is as informed as, as possible. So we're looking for that as a second thing. And also, um, the possibility of using contemporary, uh, feedback mechanisms such as electronic surveys. And who knows, maybe there's something else, uh, that, that we're still looking forward to Mike's report. The third thing is more nebulous. But the thought occurred to me that, um, as we evolve as a community, we are not who we were, nor are we who we are going to become. And yet, visioning is about, to the best of our ability, having an understanding of how do we plan for the immediate and, uh, intermediate future for the challenges and the changes of our community so that we build in to our general plan, those things that make us prepared. I love the quote from Lincoln who said, "I will prepare now, and when the time comes, I will be ready." Don't know what we'll be ready for, but we will have an opportunity. So we have asked staff to do some research of best practice, uh, possibilities, maybe, maybe from other general plans that give us the opportunity to say, is this something we may want to have in our plan? I was talking with a client today about some work that we are doing and suggested that she talk with some of her colleagues who are also doing this work, that even though what they are doing is a little different, it may spark some ideas or thoughts of some things that may be relevant for us. So those are the three things that staff will, uh, be back to us, and then we will report to you. The other thing that we have asked staff to provide us, um, there were a number of lines up to and including line, um, three thousand three hundred eighty-four, uh, where we have questions about what is in this bill that relates to our community and in some cases directly to the Planning Commission. So staff will be back in touch with us, to us with those things as well. And we didn't stay until midnight, so that's all I have to report.
Any questions, counsel, or comments? Thank you, Pam.
And I have to tell you how wonderful Mike is. He just is great.
All right. I do not see any citizen comment forms. Carrie? Any on Zoom? All right, we're gonna move on to our public hearing and action items, which we have none of, so we're gonna bypass them. And move to item five A. Counsel will now dis, uh, continue a discussion regarding approval of, for the year-end twenty-twenty-two budget amendments and the proposed for year-end twenty-twenty-three budget. Back to you, Cade.
So thanks to some last-minute review of Councilman Scott. I sent an email with the new improved numbers for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, there was a, a line item in the Santa Clara fire budget that is an expenditure for them, but shouldn't be part of what we pay back to them. So that's adjusted. It makes it so we don't spend as much of our reserve. And so at the beginning of this whole budget process, back in March, we were looking at maybe using six hundred thousand of our reserve, and now it's whittled down to a hundred and twelve thousand. So, um, still not great, but it's a lot better than where we were at. The mill levy rate came in, it's point zero nine two one percent. Uh, this last, in twenty-twenty-one, it was point one two one five percent. Um, and the property assessed value for twenty-twenty-two came in at two point one billion, and last year was one point four billion. So close to a fifty percent increase in property value of how they assessed it. So, other than that, we've been going over this budget for April, since April nineteenth or so. So any questions, new questions or concerns other than the ones that have been voiced?
Counsel? So the obvious one is, where do we end up on fire? And, uh, Dale made, in fact, Dale, I'll have you make the points that you made to me earlier, which I think are relevant.
Yes. As we, you know, the managing city is Santa Clara on, on fire, and they've already adopted their budget. And so they are also, uh, well underway in a, in, uh, putting forth a request to the, um, Washington County to help pay for, um, expenses of going to calls, uh, in the county. And there was a, um, there was new legislation passed that required that the county either provide their own services, rather than having cities cover that for them, um, uh, at the city's expense. Or they need to enter into a contract with the cities, uh, to fairly compensate cities for, um, their time and wear and tear on machinery and for their efforts in, in covering that obligation for, for the county. So, uh, Santa Clara is in the process of, uh, undergoing those, uh, or pursuing those negotiations with the county. And so even if we were to, um, say, well, let's include something additional in our budget tonight, that really is, um, meaningless, um, because we're not the managing city. And, and it would kind of undermine the, their efforts to negotiate with the county. Because right now, it, um, the, um, budget is showing that if we man Center Street, um, Fire Station, uh, it's gonna take a lot of money. And so, um, Center Street, uh, Fire Station covers a lot of area that's in the county. And so, uh, we support their efforts in negotiating with the county for reimbursement and for a contract for services. And since they've already adopted their budget, we can't do anything to change how they approach, um, this animal, um, this issue. And if the need arises to, um, to make some changes, it should be done in conjunction with Santa Clara as the managing city. And so we are required, um, to adopt the budget tonight. Uh, we've, as Cade says, we've been talking about it a long time. We've, we've had public input. We've heard a lot of comments. We've, um, we've thrown up a lot of scenarios, um, various hypotheticals. And now it comes down to, okay, what's the best data with that we have? It's, it's the budget that has been proposed. And really, this is, um, this is a fairly routine process, um, at this juncture tonight. To amend the budget for, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, uh, to tweak it, we do that every year. And there's always some little adjustments, uh, to get us through to the end of the year. And, um, some departments have some extra money and it, and it can be shifted to different type of expenditures and, and, um, and, uh, other areas may be lacking. And so it, it all, it's a nice time to balance things up and, and, um, make sure that everything is covered and, and balances at the end of the year here. And so, um, that's a fairly standard and routine practice for you. We do it every year. As for next year's budget, um, there's a lot of discussion, I think, that still needs to take place, with regards to, um, issues like fire. I don't think we're going to resolve the fire issue tonight. And, um, and so we need a little more time to do it, and we need both councils working together to do it. And we need some more input. We need to know how much the county is gonna contribute, number one. They may contribute some money, and that may say, hey, great, we can, we can do X, Y, Z with that money and, um, get closer to our target of what we want to accomplish and, and have, uh, better coverage in Ivans. I think the, the graphs and the hypotheticals that Cade worked through last meeting, caught the attention of Santa Clara. And so there's been a couple of changes to their budget, um, that have been in our favor. Mike did his own review and caught one that was also in our favor, um, uh, and a mistake that, um, um, had been, um, included in their budget, and so they've corrected that. And so there is, I think Cade has revised some presentations and made it more based on data and not just playing around with various hypotheticals to show where it goes if, if this happens. That shows that it's not, it's not as doom and gloom as we think it is, um, at least uh, for the next, uh, few years. Things may slow down a little bit or, or, or our finances, we may need to dip into reserves a little bit. We've, we've had some, a period of, um, a few years in succession before that were, um, uh, difficult years, and we made it through it. Uh, and, and so we need to evaluate where that comes out. And so I think we need to follow the, the code. The statute says, uh, we need to adopt the budget tonight. It's the last meeting you have scheduled in June. The budget has to be adopted in June. You also have to adopt the mill levy tonight, and it has to be done at this, at tonight's meeting. So, um, those are two key issues. Now, having said that, um, Cade has some interesting, um, additional food for thought. Um, thank, I want to thank Mike for providing some additional input, um, to Cade that, um, helped, show a truer and a little less gloomy picture, um, of not having to dip into reserves as much. But, uh, really, you know, we're at, we're kind of at the end of, um, we can't, there's nothing we can solve with further discussion tonight as far as solving, um, the fire issue tonight. Santa Clara has already adopted their budget and they're the managing city, so we need to adopt our budget. If we need to, we can open up our budgets again later and amend them. That just, that follows a process, but puts us on a different timeline. Uh, right now, we're on a timeline that says you have to adopt the budget tonight. If we open it up to amend, it's a timeline that says, well, you gotta give notice and you gotta have a public hearing, and, and so you gotta go through these steps to amend the budget. And, um, nor are you going to solve the issue of, is there gonna be a property tax increase next year? Well, it can't be this year, um, because the time has come and gone for truth and taxation hearings. Is it next year? I don't know. Let's, let's study as accurate a data as we can, because that's a critical decision. And, and then resolve, uh, if a property tax increase is needed. But we can't answer that question totally tonight either. Until we answer and solve the fire question, we don't know, uh, totally the answer to, um, if or how much we would have to increase property taxes and what the timing of that is. So, uh, my recommendation is that, um, we, uh, see Cade's updated holistic analysis, uh, looking at everything at, um, together. And, uh, see where, where that puts us now with the, the new data that has been collected since the last time we met. And then do what we are stat, statutorily required to do, and that is adopt the budget tonight. Um, if there's some small corrections or something that, um, we've missed over these weeks that, we need to make a further change to, we can, but as far as taking a, a big subject and saying, we're gonna resolve this, this monster in one night, and one party isn't here to discuss it. That's not gonna happen. So let's be realistic about it. And, and see the updated approach where, where this currently puts us. And then take care of the statutory business of adopt the budget, adopt the tax rate. And then, um, as we go on from here and have further discussions with the county, with Santa Clara, then let's consider the fire issue in greater, greater detail. And that will, will drive a lot of the other, the resolution, a lot of the other questions.
Thank you. So, Cade, go ahead.
So, um, just real quick, last time before we met, and this'll explain kind of the changes we'll be seeing. Santa Clara hadn't updated me until, you know, two hours before that meeting, and they're busy, so I'm not saying that. But the data wasn't, it was at the two point six million dollar budget, and now it's down closer to two point one, two point two million. So that right there will change the graphs pretty significantly by reducing it three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. And so just starting off with that, that's gonna be, at the first few years as we go here with limited growth. You know, the orange one is the old forecast, uh, blue one is the updated one. So the difference in the fiscal year twenty-three is, is as I stated. And same with fiscal year twenty-four is just the timing of Santa Clara's budget not being as updated when this was put together. Now, the other critical piece of data that these, that this updated forecast is relying on is Black Desert property evaluation. Spoke with Patrick Manning and his legal team, got their presentation that they put to their investors, um, when they went out to bond. And the, what they proposed to their investors and what their investors bought off on was that when it's all said and done, Black Desert would be valued around half a billion dollars. that when it's all said and done, Black Desert would be valued around half a billion dollars. Um, and at our current mill levy rate, that equates to around a half a million dollars extra in property tax revenue. So in twenty twenty-six, which is kind of when Black Desert's thinking everything will, uh, hopefully wrap up and finish, um, we start to see an uptick and our net income year over year isn't in the red. And by fiscal year twenty-eight, we're back to, uh, break even. Um, and the orange one, I, uh, didn't have Black Desert valued at a half a billion dollars. Um, I'd rather have been conservative back then. I wouldn't have expected to be half billion, but, um, you know, a legal team speaking with investors on, on a large loan, um, we're trusting that number here in this forecast that it'd be valued at a half billion. Um, and then come twenty twenty-six, that would financially.
That's an assessment value, not an appraised value.
Correct, yeah. Yep. Um, so this is what the net income will look like with the new update. So instead of going down to a million dollars in twenty twenty-six in the red, uh, you know, we're closer to a little under four hundred thousand. And that changes what our piggy bank would look like. So instead of before twenty twenty-six being the year that, uh, things wouldn't look good, that significantly gives us more time, um, to use the reserve, um, to figure things out, whether it would be a property tax increase that was needed, whether it's, you know, whatever the case might be, um, when Black Desert's all done, when, even if that's not a half billion, if it's four hundred million, whatever the case is, it's still going to see a larger increase than what was previously, previously forecasted. Um, and then again, this is unlimited growth, um, which very well could happen with a recession and water, yeah, Dennis.
Councilman Mayor. So your comment, Mayor, is it assessed versus, um, assessed value versus the, uh?
Appraised.
Appraised. Is that how the legal team understood it to be as well?
Yeah, the, the presentation was assessed value.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That is, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And so if you're assessing theirs, how do you assess Centier or other subdivisions in general? How do we do that? If we're relying on theirs for, how we determine in this budget, if we're concentrating on Black Desert, what about the other subdivisions or entities around there? How?
I put in a three percent property tax increase year over year. I, with Centier, they haven't proposed anything of what their valuation would be. I took Black Desert's presentation to, uh, the county assessor's office. Um, you know, they wouldn't give me an answer because twenty twenty-six is a long time, but they had the same sentiment that if this is something that's being given to investors, um, and, you know, professionals are, are looking at this, they said that this number wouldn't be crazy, right, the half billion? But for Centier and other properties like that, I, I've just increased, over the years, it's been a three, a three percent increase in property tax due to a little bit of growth or the commercial coming on and, and things like that. But Centier is not really a big factor in this, in this new updated one.
Okay, I was just wondering how the whole, how we looked at the whole city and you're just saying on norm, on the, the regular stuff, we're just adding a three percent increase?
Hmm, to be conservative.
Okay.
This year we saw a seven percent increase and the past few years it's been six, it's been eight. So it could be higher than three, but I'd rather be conservative when we're talking about four or five years from now in terms of what it's going to look like.
It'll help you keep your job.
You've got, you've got, you've got interest rates going through the ceiling now and so forth. Going to change that.
Um, and then the picture gets better if we start getting some rain in monsoon and, uh, we continue our growth. Um, again, we see the same kind of curve up where once Black Desert, another commercial comes online in twenty twenty-six, um, that's going to increase the property tax value, um, bring in other sorts of ancillary taxes, transit room tax, sales and use tax, franchise tax. Um, again, being conservative with this is using that Black Desert analysis of a half billion, um, and forecasting that a little under a half million dollars worth of extra property tax revenue. And so we would have a few years, as Dale mentioned, where we'd be dipping into the reserve, not nearly as extreme as before. Um, and then again, uh, Black Desert being completed brings that extra revenue in for the city. Now, again, this is all speculative. There's a lot of time before twenty twenty-six, but if we're being optimistic and hope that, you know, things will turn around by then or, or sustain till then, there is a brighter future than the grim one I painted a couple of weeks ago.
Mayor?
Yes.
This would be a question for you, um, being on the wa, the board, do you think, does Black Desert, will we have water to build that half a billion dollars? We don't know that, right?
Well, they have, they have their own water in large measure, so.
Isn't that just for the irrigation though, not for the?
They're, they're going to require some culinary water, so yes.
Okay.
But the, the forecast is that, given the current rate of bills, that the, uh, water that can yet be committed to, to growth will last roughly five to seven years. By that time, their, the district's plan is to have the secondary water system on, which will, um, add to the ERC's roughly twenty to twenty thousand plus. And so the, the possibility is there that, that it will continue on until that resource is consumed. And then if we, if there's no pipeline, then we could see kind of a hard stop at the end of that. With the pipeline, it obviously extends the period of time and the amount of growth that can be sustained. So it's, it's not coming to an end tomorrow. Um, the, the big concern is, is how many committed lots there are out there. But as I mentioned last meeting, the, the direction it looks like that the cities and the district are going is for the cities to divest themselves of the responsibility to provide water. That becomes solely a district function. And anyone who brings, uh, a zone change application or a development application forward will be, will be compelled to sign a, a contract, an agreement with the city, acknowledging that the city is not providing water. And the mechanism to obtain the will serve letters that are the guarantee of water, that's going to be the only guarantee of water that a developer can get, has been pretty solidified. And I meant, I explained that, I think, last meeting, how that's going to work has to do with, you know, preliminary plan and, and completed working, approved working drawings. And that's when the letter comes out and then you have basically a year to accomplish substantial completion on, on the development or lose the water associated with it and go to the back of the line, kind of.
When would they, when do you think they'll have?
It's imminent. We have another meeting on the twenty-first of this month, uh, where the mayors are getting together and, and any, anyone is welcome to come and tune into that, but the mayors are conducting the discussion and we will come back to you, our council, and their councils with, with the final recommendation. If the mayors, uh, or if the cities can't come up with an agreement as to how, uh, what the policy should be now in a shortage, then the, the district, um, bylaws require that the, that the board, uh, the board of directors for the district decides how that's going to happen. I continue to lobby for, for, um, allocation of the water to the various cities so that we have information that will help us plan. There's a lot of resistance to that, I'll just tell you. With the district taking over the, the responsibility to provide water, that would leave the cities essentially just continuing as normal. Just, you'd look at any zone change application like we knew, like we do now, same thing with subdivision applications, and then they get in line for water. If they don't get it, that's, it's not on us. And so that, that may be where we end up.
Where, where's the meeting at? When is it?
Uh, I'll let you know. I'll send you information on it.
Just one last little piece. So this is also assuming in twenty twenty-four, we do the Center Street station, get it fully manned. So if we were to change that and we do it in fiscal year twenty-three, amend the budget, um, these graphs in twenty twenty-three would just drop earlier than normal, so.
And Cade, it's just, and I'm sorry, counsel, but just because I got a lot of contact about the, the property tax increase and of course the, when a word spreads like that, the assumption is we're talking about thirty-eight percent or forty, whatever it is, on the entire property, property tax assessment. Would you once again explain and hopefully everyone will walk away understanding that that is not on the total tax assessment?
Right, so, uh, Councilman Scott last time actually had his bill and he broke it down on each property tax bill, you have your city portion, so.
Which is? Twelve, thirteen percent of the total?
Not sure, so I'm not going to give a percentage, I'm not sure the, but it's, it's, you've been looking at your bills.
Mayor, um, based on last year's valuation, had we raised the Ivans' share of real estate taxes by thirty-eight percent, my bill would have gone up just over five percent.
Your overall bill, right?
But the overall real estate taxes would have gone up just over five percent because there's so much else in there, the county, the school districts.
They take the lion's share.
They take the lion's share and Ivans is a small part of it.
So when we raise, when we do, when we as a city raise it, i- is, and when it's for our portion, do we get to keep the whole?
Yeah, that, that's our portion.
So if we say we want to raise that portion thirty-eight percent, we get to keep the whole of the thirty-eight percent?
Yeah, the legislature in its wisdom established over twenty years ago that the tax assessment for that year was going to be the amount that the cities would receive going forward with no COLA. I see Christie here, she knows how furious I am about that, but no way to adjust that, that rate based on, on inflation. So currently, so if, if you paid a tax bill in two thousand, it was, whatever percentage of your income it was, it's now half that percentage of your income, just due to inflation, right, Mike? Roughly fifty percent, uh, loss of value in the dollar. So that, that leaves cities with, with residents requiring more and more services like big pickleball court complexes and everybody wants the trail systems and all of that. And so increased services, if you will, that cost more due to inflation with our, essentially our property tax dollars diminishing. So everyone in here is paying about half as a percentage of income, the property tax that they paid twenty-two years ago in the year two thousand. Obviously that's unsustainable, but what, what the legislature did is force cities to go through this very process of truth and taxation to even that out. Some cities actually have created a COLA-like, um, ordinance so that their, their taxes, their city property tax goes up every year. We haven't done that, so we've got this big shortfall now that, that could be an ugly thing to deal with. But we're hoping that commercial spares us from that.
Mayor, just a, a clarification, the, um, people are paying less probably in real dol, you know, in, in nominal dollars as well as inflation adjusted dollars for the Ivan's share of their taxes. But I believe that the school board and others are able to raise their taxes every year anyway. So your total tax bill may not be half of what it was.
Thank you.
Effectively, but the amount that Ivans collects, it has been cut in half.
So Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Um, we kind of have the same problem with impact fees, right? Because we haven't done our impact fee studies and you can look at the budget chain and see, we're not taking, there's no inflation in there for, when they're trying to do their budgets for all these items, the impact fees are fighting the same battle.
That's why you redo them every five years, right?
But.
But in, in high inflation, you're right, now it's a problem.
We've changed that in the last two years. I mean, we can't even catch up with it.
Right. Totally off track. Dale, Dale actually cannot be here for terribly long, bless his heart. He's gone through a surgery and is on the mend and his doctor says, don't you dare stay there. I don't know if his doctor tuned in the last meeting, but he, anyway. So, Cade, continue, sorry for the interruption, but it's important that everyone understands how that works.
Yeah, and, and you hit it on the head, so I won't, you know, repeat, you know, beat a dead horse, but, um, you know, the main point too is the city over the years has done a good job. We have, at the end of this year, close to two point seven million. So we do have a little bit of leeway, right? As Dale mentioned, we don't have to make this decision tonight on, do we raise the property taxes? Let's, you know, obviously we don't want to use the reserve, we don't have to, but it is there for times like this where we really want to wait and see what the data comes in as. Um, you know, if in, in two weeks, look how much data, you know, even just the Santa Clara part of in updated data, you know, changes our future. Um, so the city has done good, we're in a good position. We're not technically locked in anything crazy to where we can't change our future. We have options and there's things out there and we'll continue to, to brainstorm and, and do research and reach out to others and, and, and figure out the best case scenario for us. So last time I know is grim, we were all tired eleven-thirty, but we can, we can work through it. We're in a good spot. The city's done a fantastic job the last ten years of putting us in this position to where it's not, hey, two years from now, we're in trouble and then it speeds up the process. We have some time to let the data come in, see where the chips fall and then, and then kind of go from there and make better informed decisions.
So Dale, to kind of echo, or, or to, to your point at least, the requirement that we adopt the budget leaves us really in a position tonight of simply having to do that. And given the fact that, that Santa Clara oversees fire, um, it certainly would be the proper posture on our part to let them figure this out. They know how, the, the urgency of getting this station manned. That, I don't think that's a question anymore. So we would continue to, to work with them and promote, uh, a solution coming forward and as they continue their discussions with the county. And then, then at some point in the time, hopefully soon, hopefully within the next, you know, few months, th- there would be a proposal coming to us and to them both, but both city councils to amend budgets and, and make a provision to, uh, solve that problem. Is that right?
Right, and, and they, um, fully understand that, and they have committed to us, that the next manned station will be in Ivans. Uh, whether we find a location on Quabasah or whether it's Center Street, the next manned station is Ivans and they're working hard towards that. Um, now, I think a, a bigger philosophical question to resolve, um, as we go about trying to get to that point is, what is the model that we are using to call it fully manned? Is it a twenty-four hour shift per employee? Um, is it a twelve hour shift? Um, do we, do we allow, um, a few part timers to piecemeal and, and put together coverage for one full shift for one, one person? Um, and Jenny's brought that up, that, you know, there's part timers out there that want to be involved, there's volunteers out there that want to be involved. And I'm hearing, um, Santa Clara say, um, we haven't got the commitment to cover a shift. Well, that word shift, um, can mean a lot of different things. And, uh, it can mean a twenty-four hour shift. Um, it can mean, uh, the twelve hour shift that Brock mentioned, it can mean an eight hour shift, which, you know, most people are familiar with, working an eight hour day. Um, it can mean job sharing, where you have two people working four hour shifts to cover an eight hour day. It happens all the time in, in office settings. Um, I'm not the fire expert. And, and there were, there were, it was mentioned about some fire standards, um, and those should be looked into, um, and, and if they need to be questioned, um, which again is why I, I don't think you solve that issue tonight. Um, but what is the model, um, that Santa Clara and Ivans are going to move forward on? Are we absolutely required to have in place a certain model? Um, I would love to hear, um, from, um, for example, Chief Stoker, um, uh, as to what's required, what, what is the model that's required? Um, I consider him to be an excellent fire chief here locally. Um, uh, and it, or is it this, um, model that is, um, just for lack of a better term, the larger neighboring state, um, model that is, is commonly used and, and that's more of a twenty-four hour shift? And so people can live in a different place and commute to their job where they live in the fire station full time for X number of days or weeks, um, to cover their twenty-four hour shifts. And then they go home, uh, to their family and have those days off. Um, or is it, um, hiring more locally? Um, do you have some of those, um, twenty-four hour people as, as kind of a backbone or is it a twelve hour backbone? uh as kind of a backbone or is it a twelve-hour backbone? And then then use um some part-timers to fill in? I I think that's the, that's the crux of the issue that has to be resolved before you can really get to the bottom of what's this going to cost to have a manned station? Um, and I think that's where you are headed, isn't it Jenny, with with all of this?
I agree completely with what you're saying.
Yeah.
So the, but but once again, since uh fire is not under our direct management then.
Right.
We're relying on on Santa Clara, you know, their their city manager and the fire chief to be sorting this out to the benefit of both cities. Um, but uh we're, I think we need to kind of hold feet to the fire on this because we have a lot of residents who are really concerned about this. I mean, this is, this is a big, big deal in our city.
Absolutely.
And I don't want, uh, so we adopt the budget tonight, what what I don't want is for that to somehow be a sigh of relief. And, you know, the problem doesn't exist now for for another year or two or three or whatever. Um, I I think the disposition of the council is that we, we want to see them pursue that. I mean, take take some action sooner than later so that we can rectify that that poor coverage, yes.
And sometimes the same issue comes up with police as far as what is meant by the term shift. And Bob has um said, well, if you, if you cover a long shift, um, you may not be as effective, it may not be as safe for you. Um, whereas fire and EMS, they may be waiting for calls and so they have a, they have um places where they can sleep and and waiting for a call to come in because they come in as as all hours. Whereas police are out um patrolling the city more often, it's a, it's a little different dynamic, but but Santa Clara certainly would have the right to say, um, Bob, would you come explain your model? And um let us um give some input and and Ivans, if you would explain uh why you've gone with the model that you have. I I think either city um who isn't managing has a s- still has a right to be at the table and have a voice as to some of these uh real critical issues. And it's, and it it started at that last um meeting and I and I hope that continues. Um, I I know it is at the city manager level. Um, and it was nice that um that Santa Clara had some uh city council uh folks here as well and and so um it's nice to see um that they're supporting uh looking at the at the whole model. Um, and and they have a right to request that of law enforcement from us as well. So I I think absolutely both both cities should be at the table.
So Mayor.
Yes.
When when you brought that up, they had support here for the fire, is there any time we need to go to support the police in the same aspect?
We had, we had a conversation with them recently about about this move and the impact on them and uh they wanted to have a a presence remaining there where someone could go to their city hall and speak with an SCI officer. And so that Dale Dale in immediately got with Bob and worked that out. So uh I'm sure that you and Jenny particularly are not going to let this drop and and um you know, at some point in time, we may want to put together some sort of of um either meeting schedule, Dale, like we talked about um intermittently, quarterly or whatever and and have those on our council who are expert in some of these areas be a part of those discussions.
And I'm saying that if there's an, if there's ever a need for us to go to the Santa Clara to be supportive, let us know.
Yes, we will. And and for our our pickleball folks, you know, who've been here lobbying for us to build some courts um at a quarter million dollars per per four, we found out. Um, if it comes down to a discussion between um upgrading fire and building more recreational facilities, there's no question where that's got to go. That's our, our first and primary responsibility is to help self, safety and welfare of our residents. So um not to, you know, put that off specifically, but but this is something that we have to take into account. So the recommendation is that we, that we do what we need to do tonight. Allow Santa Clara to to move forward with their discussions and planning and then get together and talk about that plan and figure out what that, what the budget implications in, then open the budget at that time.
Yes.
Um, Mayor.
Yes, please.
I'd like to go back to uh the analysis that Cade did, just sort of updating the holistic plan, that sort of last slide. Um, so a lot of the improvement in the slides or in our financial position uh has to do with just the real estate valuation at Black Desert, is that right?
Correct.
But but also, um, a lot of the uptick in revenue again after a couple of years also has to do with sales tax and room tax that would be generated by Black Desert, is that right?
Correct, and in the analysis, it's a very small amount compared to what um, why isn't it showing up? Compared to what Black Desert projects? If if Black Desert is going to be as good as they think they're going to be, we'll be okay. If we can weather the storm for a few years in Black Desert, then we will be, will be good.
But what you have done in the analysis is 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 that uptick starting in a couple of years is in part due to a conservative estimate for sales tax and room tax as well. So it's not just the real estate tax, it's that commercial.
Correct.
Component.
So um if their transit room tax takes off the way they're projecting again, we would see close to an extra million dollars in transit room tax. Right now, that would a hundred percent. I mean, our budget for transit room, sales tax revenue would just shoot through the roof.
If this is on an annual basis?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, they project, I think, in their projection, it was fifty-seven million between the next forty-five years that they would bring into the city.
And then um not particularly question for Cade, but it seems like the direction that I'm hearing we're going is we're going to ignore the Center Street station in our budget tonight and I'm just not remotely comfortable with that. At at our last meeting, I talked about the five-minute response times that's in our plan uh from last fall. And and I guesstimated that about half the city wasn't covered in that five-minute response time because Center Street isn't a functioning station. Um, I just spent only a half an hour today on on wondering if my number was ridiculous or not. And uh gee, where did I put it? Uh, I went out and I looked at um the five-minute response time and uh mapped it all. And this is rough and it's it's even even more neighborhoods are involved. I counted twenty-eight subdivisions and there's more than that outside of that five-minute response time with sixteen hundred and eighty-nine homes. The whole analysis on the split between us and Santa Clara shows that Ivans has four thousand and seventy-six occupied homes. So I know in my twenty-eight subdivisions, I've missed subdivisions and I've missed homes that aren't in subdivisions. So I'm sure we have over two thousand homes that are not within the five-minute response time. I think if we adopt a budget that that doesn't pay proper service to getting Center Street up and running again, it's just wrong. Um, I think it's, yes, I know that we adopted on our end and say, well, we need extra staffing at Center Street. I know we're relying on Santa Clara to say, oh, okay, well, we'll increase our budget too because Santa Clara pays about forty-four percent. We we pay fifty-six, they pay forty-four. Um, well, whether they're going to do it or not, I'm an unhappy customer, they're the vendor. I think we need to up the budget to do our fifty-six percent share of what has to happen to get Center Street running adequately, not ideally yet. Uh, not not Chief Parker's twenty-thirty plan, but I've had a lot of correspondence with him over the last couple of weeks. And uh, you know, he's got a very thoughtful, he's done a lot of analyses, he's got a really thoughtful plan. I think we need to budget for it and then we go to our vendor, Santa Clara, and say, we're not happy. We've got this money, we need Center Street staffed and we want you to come up with your forty-four percent. There's our fifty-six percent. If they refuse to come up with their forty-four percent, well, shame on them uh because they're the ones who emptied out our Center Street station, in my view. Uh, and then at, we can still go to the vendor and say, okay, you've got our fifty-six percent. Let's talk to Chief Parker and what's the best he can do with the money that we've allocated? And get Center Street up and running to some level. At the, at the meeting with Chief Parker, you know, uh thanks to Jenny, I think she got she got the uh fire department sort of turned back around in the right direction on involving volunteers. But volunteers aren't the way to 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 wholly run a station. And so I I uh I I would vote for uh budget increase on fire. I think it's absolutely essential and I think that's, and that we got to put pressure on uh Santa Clara and send our best salesperson out there, the mayor, to uh to tell them they need to pony up right away. Because this is not acceptable, that probably close to half the homes in this city are outside the five-minute response time. And in Santa Clara, a hundred percent of their homes are within the five-minute response time. So just just for fun, because I like to play with numbers, I thought, well, you know, instead of divvying up, how much does Ivans pay versus Santa Clara for fire? Right now, it's divvied up based on population. So well, why not population within the five-mile response time? Right? Because we're not really getting ideal service outside of that. In in that case, instead of paying fifty-six percent, we'd only be paying forty-three percent. We'd be paying less than, less than Santa Clara would be paying. Um, you know, uh that that's a, that would be a reduction in uh in our budget by about three hundred thousand dollars. So um that's sort of a tangent, but I I'm just, I I just can't imagine that a city council would adopt a budget that acknowledges that the Center Street station isn't isn't functional or can't be functional quickly. Chief Parker said he could get uh three full-time captains and three full-time AEMTs in here in a heartbeat. Uh, and so we could be up and running and then supplement that with volunteers. And then that give, he says that's, that's ideal, not not for his long-term vision, but says that gives you a fully-staffed uh Center Street station. So I'm looking at you like I'm yelling at you, I'm not. Your uh, your work is phenomenal. Uh, I'm just yelling at the frustration of this, of what's been going on since last fall when they emptied out that station.
How many dollars is that?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no.
So it would cost uh fifty-one thousand dollars according to Chief Parker, fifty-one three ninety-six, to get Center Street functional. Uh, just just the physical activity. I understand we have to pay a hundred percent of that, right?
Yes.
Um, we can drop that from fifty-one thousand to three thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars uh by delaying the the alerting system. Chief Parker said we could delay that for a year and the staff would simply use pagers. So uh but when I say, you know, why not have the alerting system? So I'm saying we need to pony up fifty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars in this budget to get Center Street up and running. Again, I'm not yelling at you, Cade. You're just in front of me. Um, and then uh our share of operating costs, uh first of all, Chief Parker also shaved some money off because the full-time AEMTs are actually going to be less expensive to us than the part-time AEMTs. Uh, he he ran that through, is it Debbie, their finance person? Uh, and he 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 would, as I said, he could get this fully-staffed almost immediately because he would take current part-time people who want to go full-time. They already have safety gear and that saves us a lot of money uh right there, just the the safety gear is not that cheap. So the operating cost for uh safety gear, zero, personnel salaries, apparatus, fuel and apparatus maintenance is uh six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Our share, based on the fifty-six percent, would be about three hundred and fifty-five thousand. So I I I believe we need to put in four hundred and six thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars in our budget. And yes, I know that dips into reserves and that's a terrible thing because I don't think we have enough reserves to begin with. Uh, but this, to me, is an emergency situation and that's what reserves are for. And then we go to Santa Clara, we say, you need to, you need to come up with your share so we get the right thing done here. If they won't, I'm sure you can go to a vendor and say, look, I want to give you extra money, what can you do with this extra money just for us? Our partner isn't cooperating, but we need this to happen six months ago. Sorry, that's.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and I'm fine with that, um, because I would like to do that. And you came up with an an option that had not been on the table as one of the options that um you could choose from. And that's, that's kind of what's hard when you're just given a couple of options and said, this is what you get to choose from. And that's why I'm saying it comes down to what's your model? Um, and and that's a long-term, longer-term uh look as well as a short-term. What, now, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've you've had further discussions with um Chief Parker. Um, but what I heard was that um they decided not to do their, not to send out their wildland crews um and that they're going to keep wildland here. Um, which when, when we provided our own fire service, that was always my position was that we're not, we'll play ball in our own backyard. Um, so if if someplace in the county, um, there's a fire and we, and they need help, we'll, we'll provide mutual aid. But we're not sending out of state um a fire, a a wildland firefighting crew and a piece of uh equipment to fight that fire, uh to try and make a little, little bit of money on it. Um, when we have such an issue of exposure to wildland fire in Cayenta. So we always held back our wildland crews um here within the city. And so if he's not sending wildland crews, uh the question is, does he still have those folks available to him? And can those people be brought on in a heartbeat? Um, as well, because usually they're thinking, hey, I'm going out and fighting, fighting some wildland fires. Um, and they're not this year. Um, and that that's exactly the type of uh training that we need um when we have such a risk for a wildland fire in Cayenta, uh particularly this year. And so I've had uh some thoughts as along those lines as to how we could do this immediately as well. Um, and so um you came up with looking at it um as coming up with another, another option. I I'm looking at it as another way to come up with another option and and I think maybe Jenny has another way.
This isn't another option, this is basically his option number three, which he actually made less expensive because he realized that the full-time AEMTs, three full-time AEMTs are cheaper than whatever it is, nine or nine part-time or so. Plus, the safety gear was a big saving because he's taking it from part-time people. I think the wild, I I don't know enough about the wildland issue. It sounded like that could be more of a, a budget-saving item for us. Uh, just like if we get money from the county, that would be a plus. So we have these if, if, ifs out there. I don't care about the ifs, I care about the nows. And now we have a fire station that is is not effective. We have probably half the homes in this city are not within the five-minute response time. I think we need to make a commitment to that and and budget the four hundred and six thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, maybe the fire chief doesn't have the right plan, but I'm not the one to sit here and try to second-guess a fire chief that we hired because we thought he was the right answer for our joint communities. I think that we did challenge him, Jenny in particularly, at at the meeting when he did his presentation on on how the fire department, and this even preceded Chief Parker. It's not, it's not, he's not to fault for this, but the thinking in in the fire department for a while has really gone away from the volunteer concept. And and Chief Parker did agree that he would boost that. Chief Parker did agree that he'd sit down with us quarterly and we could talk about the plans for the future. I'm not talking about what we might need to do for the twenty-thirty plan, I'm talking about what we need to do yesterday uh just to get our city better coverage uh like we used to have, so.
Other comments? Yes, council member.
To address one of your points, um Dale, is that the reason, from what I understand, that they aren't sending out a wildland crew is because they don't. that they aren't sending out a wildland crew is because they don't have a wildland crew available. It's not that they chose to keep them here. And the reason for that is because of the way they've changed the way they deal with volunteers. And because of their volunteer choices, they no longer have a wildland crew to send out. So, we can't use that. I still am very much in firm belief that we can use volunteers and part-timers to staff ours, whether they choose to staff Rachel. I still believe that they can make a functioning department at our station using the, the resources that they already have, who already have equipment, who already have certification, who already have all the things in place to do. And it's not going to require even the amount of budget that you're suggesting. I think too, that it would be good to put a budget in. But I think if we said, we have this much and we want to use our volunteers and we take that to them, they'll find a way. And so, I think, I think that's maybe what we need to do is somewhere in between there, we do something. We do it now, like you say, that's important, but I don't think that we need to cave to what they, what they think the standard is. And I don't know the answer for sure, but I would think that even it might be possible to have, you know, we talked before about the different standards for a full-time department as opposed to a volunteer or a part-time department. Maybe they can split that up and have where, you know, you have your, your standards for this station and your standards for that station, so that they're, they're able to do both. And we can have what we've always had and better. So, I, I think it's possible, even with a less budget than what you're proposing.
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Anderson.
So, I'm sitting here as I've been thinking about this budget and I've been thinking about, look at that chart over there with the numbers of the value of homes each month. Yeah. I'm just thinking to myself, when I look at risk and liability, I'm looking here, we got $5 million a month a home, $70 million a year. And here, we're saying, we can't respond to a, a home in less than five minutes. If I had a home, I'd put forth another, I mean, everybody pays more in insurance to have better insurance. This is a good insurance, you know? You took your $4,000 bill, five, 5%, that's $2,000 a year, you know? And it's probably not going to be that much at 5% if we have to increase it because you do all the math on the $70 million a year. I don't think we need that much money, you know? But I do think we need to, I guess where I'm going with that is I think this, this is now, because July 4th, come of July, that we always have problems with 4th of July. I think we've got to be acting on it now, because I, I know, and sitting here in the audience, I know people have said about response for paramedics. If you're the one out there, that $406,000 is important to you. Because you start talking medical bills, hosp, you know, all these things are big dollars compared to what we're talking here. I think we just got to, it's, that's a lot of money for a budget, but there's a lot of value. If we really have those values, we need to be able to-
Of course, that would drastically change your graphs.
It would just speed it up by that. We have the reserve to do it, right? So, for some reason, my laptop wasn't working, but it, it doesn't necessarily put us in a doom and gloom situation if we increase this year's budget, excuse me, by the $400,000. All it does is just bring the graph down quicker, but it doesn't change the long-term outlook with the commercial that's on its way.
And mayor?
Because that's planned on ultimately anyway, right? And in your projections-
Right. This just goes into the reserves.
Going to this level three at this station is a part of the long-term plan. It just increases the dip-
From 24 to 23, yep.
At this moment in time, yes.
Mayor, sort of two points. One, piggybacking on Lance, in talking about home values versus the budget that we're talking about here. So, if you add my $406,000 to the revised fire department budget, that works out to $176.45 for every resident in Ivans per year. That's the whole budget, the whole fire department budget. That's cheap insurance. I think the second thing is, maybe there are other models, but we've hired a fire chief, the combined communities, not because we thought he was the worst hire, we thought he was the best hire. He's the expert. I, I'm not an expert. Jenny is the closest to being an expert at, at this table. Maybe Lance next. I'm probably last. I'm relying on Chief Parker. If, if, if you're not sure that that's the best model, and I think he has said that he will, he will get working on the volunteers. But I think what, what he's proposed here is the proper way to do it, but it still doesn't give us spectacular coverage. What if there are two incidents at a time? So, that's where the volunteers are hugely important. But I think we need to add this to the budget to say, we're making a commitment to Center Street, put Santa Clara's feet to the fire, as, as the mayor suggested, but this is the way to do it, by saying, we're ready to go now. The chief is telling us he could staff this almost instantly. And, and then, we can also sit down with the chief, whoever we think have some expertise, and just say, is this particular staffing model exactly right? Because we want to do something now, or should we do something a little different now? But this is, I've, I've had probably a half a dozen emails with him in the last week or two, and this is what he's gravitating towards. And again, this isn't the gold-plated plan. The gold-plated plan was to add 1.2 million a year, I think, to the budget. This is 400,000. So, I, 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 I can't accept a budget without having this in it.
And we can open it up if we need to.
The concern that Dale expressed is that doing something like this now may jeopardize the negotiations with the county. And I can see that maybe going both ways. For one thing, if the cities are providing a service to the county that they're not paying for, regardless of, of whether we pony up a budget amount to support, you know, an increase in, in the, the fire service or not, it'd be, I'd like to go with whoever's doing the negotiating and say, we just ain't going to go respond, so figure something else out.
And mayor, just, I, I would rather jeopardize our negotiations with the county than to jeopardize half the residents in this community. I don't think it jeopardizes our negotiations with the county, because again, Chief Parker's vision is that our budget would be up by 1.2 million dollars a year. This is the first $400,000 step in that. So, the county can see very easily from his numbers that we need a lot of money.
Mayor, I, I have a few thoughts. And I would say, first and foremost, to your point, Mike and Jenny, we had a functioning Center Street station. When was that?
Six months ago.
Six months ago.
Nine months ago, actually.
So, I, I believe that the, the combined, you know, municipalities here that, you know, we represent, Ivans City, that could be reversed. It's, it's a mindset, it's a, it's a model, it's a something that they've put together. I, I agree that we should update the facility. I think that is, can be done for 3,009.36, I think you said, Mike? That's, that, that's something we should just do. I think you can hold off on the alert system. I think we get fancy alert systems on hospital units and pagers and all this stuff. I mean, a pager will work. We all want the same thing. We want the response that we need. I think from a purely logistical standpoint, this is, this is, so, I think we, couldn't we just have a, on our next agenda in July, a budget amendment discussion related to this 400,000 and have like a work meeting with Santa Clara and kind of roll up the sleeves and figure this out? In the meantime, make some adjustments of staffing to make sure that we have, and location to make sure that we have adequate response. I, I think that can be done without spending $400,000. Not, so help me, help me see why that's not possible. And then, then we get, we get done, we do our duty here with, you know, the state requirements. We pass, pass the budget and we could even say in the, in the motion, pending, I mean, it's passed, but with the understanding that we're going to have a, a budget amendment discussion related to this line item in the very near future.
Thank you.
Mayor, other comments?
Yes. I'm, I'm just not prepared to kick this down the road. I just, I just think that is totally wrong on our part. That's our, our number one, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at land use and new development stuff. That's not the primary job of the city. Public safety's the primary job. And, and we're admitting in the current budget that we don't care. Yeah, we care. We'll talk about it. We'll go down the road. I think we have to make the commitment now, hold Santa Clara's feet to the fire. If they're not going to be a good partner and step in, then work with Chief Parker, because we have this budgeted money, to say, what do we get? This is only 56% of what we need for your plan. So, what's a new plan where this 56% at least gets Center Street operational to, to, to some level? It, it just makes no sense to me to, to delay.
Go ahead, Cade.
Legal question. Dale, could I run down to my office, change the budget, email it to everybody, and then they say they can improve the budget? Does that work?
Yeah. Will you answer one question for me? ARPA funds. ARPA funds can be used for this, can't it?
Yes, we can use the ARPA funds on public safety, salaries, wages. So, beginning of last July, anyways, last July, we received a half-million-dollar tranche. We haven't spent it yet, so we had to take it off the books as revenue. So, it's just sitting there to be spent. So, we can, I could update the budget again to say, we're going to use this, increase our revenue, increase our expenditures, and so the next year, we wouldn't be looking at such a big reserve, or using the reserve as much.
Right. And then, that buys us time to consider other things that take a little longer, but we do fund immediately, or provide the tools to fund immediately. And from, from Chief Parker's presentation, it wasn't clear to me that he could do this so quickly. So, we, we talked about it and about whether we should use ARPA funds for that purpose and said, well, it's going to, you know, by the time you post and, and recruit and, and if he's, if he already has a system that he's got in mind now that he, maybe he didn't then, that's great. Kudos to, to him thinking about it further and coming up with a way to, to man the station immediately. And so, then, I'm just thinking as a way to fund it immediately without having an immediate negative impact on the city. ARPA funds, that's one of the things that ARPA funds could be used for. And so, I don't know that you would have to amend the document itself if you said, as amended, to provide X dollars for, to, to apply towards manning the Center Street building immediately using ARPA funds. I think that's a simple enough change that you could say, that it could be adopted as amended. And, and so, and, and I'm not, I'm, let me be clear, I'm not opposed to, to what you're saying at all. In fact, our job as staff is to support the council and, and what they decide to do. And, and so, we kind of, we kind of hear a direction and we kind of go that way and, and try to, to work within that time, within that framework. And we saw that under the current options that were available and, and what was presented publicly, at least, didn't sound that promising to man it immediately. And so, we said, well, then, you know, we're going to have to just pass the budget, open it up for amendment and have discussions. And I don't know if it, you know, this late in the game, if it can happen. I mean, if he's got the people and it can happen before July 4th, I'm with you, Lance. I would rather have coverage out of Center Street to cover the possibility of fireworks igniting wildland fires and keep our citizens safe from, from wildland fires, but just structure fires as well. We don't know when those are going to happen. So, as I said at the very, very beginning of this process, was that there's going to be some tough decisions to be made. And, and Mike's drawn a good line in the sand and said, no, you're absolutely correct. What your first and foremost duty is, is to protect the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of this city. And what staff's role is, is to find a way to do that.
And Mike, in his, in his thorough investigation, has already paid for half the 400 he's asking for by catching a $200,000 mistake, Jenny.
And, and while I'm as passionate about us getting a fires, a fire station up and running here in our community as Mike is, I think that even if we put that in the budget, there's no guarantee that Santa Clara is going to give us what we want. Yes, it's, it's putting their feet to the fire, but they still have the option to do it the way they want to. And so, I don't think that that is completely the answer. I wish it were. I wish we could say, here's our funds, okay, and it's going to happen. But I don't think anything's going to happen until we come together and come up with something, no matter how much we want it. And so, I don't know that necessarily that, that funding is going to fix the problem. And so, I may be more in favor of passing it with the suggestion that was just given with ARPA funds and being very serious about moving on and setting a meeting and doing something ASAP and getting it done the right way and the way that we want it. And then amend the budget, amend the budget knowing what is going to be required and how we can make it work. That would be what I would think would be the best choice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I would also say, perhaps a proviso, that it's, it's understood that we also open up the joint agreement for discussion and amendment. Because it, it does change the, the modeling as far as how fees should, should be based. You should, you should be paying for apples and apples, not apples and oranges. And, and so, I think, I think we should open up the agreement for negotiation. And, you know, sometimes I say, hey, it wasn't written down, you know? It wasn't written in the agreement. Yeah, it was understood a certain way, and that's, you know, we'll, we'll live by that. But let's, let's, let's take this a little more carefully and, and let's, let's adopt it instead of just the way that we handled law enforcement, because that's the way it was based. And, and that worked for a while with fire, when, when coverage was pretty equal. But as Mike's indicated, and I appreciate Mike for the homework that he always does, and documentation that he comes up with, because that, that paints a pretty clear picture that our services are not equal. And so, there needs to be a different mechanism used to share the funding of, of fire expenses. And so, I would, I would recommend that, in addition to what Jenny's saying, is that, you know, we're going to add this to our, to our budget for fire. So, it's available. We don't know if Santa Clara is going to use it or not, but it's available, but we want to open up negotiations right away on the contract. And, and we want, we want to see implementation of manning Center Street immediately.
So, we ran our own fire state, fire department for quite a while. And I don't have the number before me, but if you add 408,000- before me, but if you add 408,000, and I, Jenny, am I right, you're suggesting that we, that we dedicate that half million dollars in ARPA funds as a reserve for fire? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I would propose that.
So, so that, that whole amount is sequestered to, for the purpose of getting the Center Street, Center Street Station up and running? Is that, so that's even more than you're suggesting, Mike?
Mayor?
Yeah, one, one, one second here. So, I thought we made it pretty clear that one of the options that our city faces, has, is that we simply part, you know, have a divorce, and, and we take this on ourselves. So, given the budget that we have, and, and even using your $400,000 figure, that would give us a total budget for fire of, my, right around 1.5. And I, I'm sure we don't have in front of us what our budgets were when we were running fire ourselves a few years ago, but it strikes me that it was not even that.
It was a third that.
Not that, not that much, anyway. So, and, and I, I don't throw this out as a threat to Santa Clara, anything like that. It's, we've had a wonderful partnership there. I sat in on the interviews, when they interviewed four candidates for the fire chief. There's no question that Andy Parker was, was certainly up there at the top. And to, to your point, Mike, you know, you, you hire somebody that has the knowledge and expertise, and then you have to have a certain amount of trust and faith that they are, that they're doing what they're being told to do, right? And, and Jenny's the one with the most experience here, is saying that, that the, and to Dale's point about the model, which is totally right, right? You can, you can piece this together 100 different ways, and each one has its own attendant price tag.
Lance had a comment.
Yeah.
It'd be closer to 1.7.
1.7, so.
100.
So Lance, go ahead.
First of all, I just wanted you to remind me what ARPA funds can be used for, and where they come from.
So part of the, it's, ARPA stands for American Rescue Plan Act. It was part of the COVID package back in, it was past 20 some odd, a few years ago.
Yeah.
It could be used for public safety salaries, it could be used for, they specifically mentioned like broadband, so capital projects to help cities get better internet, or something to do with water. But the bit, the one that they made super simple for cities was, they could say, hey, during COVID, you only have to prove you lost $10 million worth of revenue. You can just say, I'm checking that box, we lost $10 million worth of revenue, and then use that to essentially pay public safety salaries, or vehicles, or things like that.
That was the question. Then the second one is, 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 well, not question, you can, I just comment. The, so if we use the ARPA funds, that we're using them for what they're designed for.
Yes.
And, and to me, we always say, the wildland in Canada, but let me tell you, that red mountain right there?
Absolutely.
I've seen that fire come down the red mountain faster than it goes up the mountain.
Yeah.
And that side of the Highway 91 scares me to death.
Yeah.
Because we got people up there driving, so, and I, I'm even with Mike, what, what happens, I found in my business, is if I try not making things similar, so if we don't put in this, the whole thing for the station, you create confusion and opportunities for people to have a reason why something didn't happen. So that $51,000, I, I would like to include it, so everything is similar to them. So when someone from there comes over here, oh, I gotta remember to do this. No, they, they know the drill, because you only have, you got seconds. And they turn into minutes, and minutes turn into, you know, if you drive clear up by those two's houses, seven minutes, you know? So, we just gotta be, I know from a budget standpoint, but I'm telling you, when you're talking that $406,000 compared to the value that it's saving, to me, it's.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing that may come forward as a motion, is that the, the council is satisfied with the rest of the budget. We're not turning to Cade and saying, okay, we're going to take this out of this budget, and this out of this, to pay for this. We are going to, the motion will include that we're going to dedicate the, the ARPA funds that we have currently in reserve, for the specific purpose of manning the Center Street Station. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what the council has told, has agreed, basically agreed upon?
Mayor?
Yes.
So, does that, are, are you saying that the budget then will reflect, call it a, a $400,000 increase in fire?
I think you're talking about a $500,000, up to $500,000.
Well, what will the budget, so i- i- instead of the budget currently saying, a million 287, 827?
You're adding $500,000 to that.
Will it say a million 693, 949?
We could add in, our first tranche was like, 5 million, or 500,020, some, some odd, a little over half million. So the new updated budget would show an extra half million dollars worth of revenue. And then we could say, we'll leave it at the 406, but we could match it the same. I mean, we could increase the fire by the exact same amount of the revenue we're bringing on.
The wisdom in this, Mike, is that if, if we place that hole, and that whole $500,000 there, and there's resistance on the part of Santa Clara to, to fund their share, we are then in a position to do whatever we have to do to make that operational, right?
But.
Which, which you can't guarantee with the 400 and.
Right, thousand.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm still a little unclear. So currently, in, in the, in the budget as it stands, we're showing Fire EMS at a million 287, 827. So are you saying we'll up that number by 500,000?
That's correct.
Correct.
The budget will reflect a million 787, 827.
Is that, is that how everybody understands this?
And then a brick shelf.
Dale?
No, that's great.
Cade? That's what, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
And by being in our budget, that doesn't allow, even though it's earmarked for fire, that does not allow Santa Clara to spend our.
Yes.
ARPA funds. It's just, we've put it there and earmarked it for that purpose.
Well, and the motion should state specifically that this additional money is for the specific purpose of manning the Center Street Station. And so that would be whether it happens through Santa Clara, with or without their participation, or if that is handled on our own. And your indignation about this, I mean, it's justified. It, it is not right for us to have half our community out of, out of a reasonable service. And ironically, as Cade showed us the impact of Black Desert, Black Desert, by the time that is operational, is going to require a top-level fire service, right? You talk about the insurance rate on a billion dollars worth of property. They're, they're going to want to have a very highly rated department to, to back them up.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Are we ready for that, everybody?
Yeah.
Any more than yes? Discussion, comments?
No, I'll listen to your motion.
So, so I move that we put.
Correct, just, just to make it known, we are now on item 5B. We've jumped to the, to the resolution. So your motion would be that we're going to adopt this resolution with the following amendment?
Right, with the following amendment, that we apply $500,000 of ARPA funds as, what, as revenue, and, and increase the Fire EMS budget by $500,000 earmarked for re-establishing the Center Street Station, including the, the rehab as, and the personnel.
Is that clear to everyone? Carrie, do you think you got that? All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve Resolution Number 2022-11R, a resolution of Ivan City, Utah, adopting the final budgets for fiscal year ending, ending June 30, 2023. That's been seconded, and now discussion.
And, yeah, just discussion for sort of my amendment, which is just simply, we are going to still have a discussion.
Yes.
To talk about the philosophy, the model, the future, because I'm with Jenny on, we need to have a volunteer kind of aspect to this. So I want that to be understood.
Are you, are you willing to add, add that amendment to the motion?
We're all 100% behind Jenny on that. I accept that completely. I think that's essential.
Okay. So with, then the, the vote will be on this motion as amended?
Yeah. I just wanted to make a comment, when we say that, you know, the numbers in, in the Black Desert, a billion dollars? Half a billion, what did you just tell me? Half a billion dollars?
Billion dollars in, in actual value, half, half billion dollars in.
Okay.
Tax assessment.
I would, I would probably state, without a lot of analyzing, that the 2,000 homes that we don't have are over, worth a billion, too.
Oh, yeah.
And so.
That's a good observation.
Sure. You get what I'm saying, we're, we're, we gotta think about what we're doing, so.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
And Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, good job, Mike. All right, what the heck. I'm getting, I'm getting old, and we stay here late, so.
So I'll get that updated.
It's for a good cause, no?
And then sent to the state with the updated numbers for you guys.
Great. Now, council, right on the heels of that, please, we, we need to certify the tax rate. As Dale mentioned, we, we can't go into truth and taxation now, we don't, anyway, so.
Mayor?
Any objection to this? Yes?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Is everybody ready for that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 2022-12R, resolution of Ivan City, Utah, approving the certified property tax rate for calendar year 2022.
Thank you. Second to that?
Second.
Oh, five seconds. Motion made by Councilmember Mayor, and I think I heard Councilmember Johnson first, seconding the, the motion to approve the Resolution Number 2022-12R, a resolution of Ivan City, Utah, approving the certified tax rate for calendar year 2022.
Property tax rate.
Thank you, property tax rate for calendar year 2022. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Done. Dale?
Get out of here.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I move to suspend the rules and move letter M, and then keep Dale here for another five minutes?
Oh.
Because I do have some legal questions about the official ballot drop boxes.
That's fine, that's fine with me. Council, any objection to that?
No.
Would somebody make that motion in, please?
Well, I move that we move, we suspend the rules and, and discuss M right now.
Item 5M, bring that to this point in the agenda. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. We are now on item 5M. Dale, you're here for another minute.
All right.
Oh.
Okay, go ahead. I'd love to hear it.
Actually, what is your question?
Well, okay, well, I have some specific questions about this topic. I don't have any concerns about the recitals. I do have some questions related to section 1, letter B, where it says, the county agrees to send two election staff members to safely and securely pick up, da, da, da. What are we picking up? Is it a box that's not fixated to a, a, it's not like at the Santa Clara Library?
No.
This is something, it's on a counter?
Yeah, yes. And it is behind, it has to be secured.
Yeah.
So it's actually behind the glass.
Okay.
And it's locked. And then you hand the ballot in through the glass, and it goes, they watch it go into the box.
And prior to the mail-in ballot process that we're involved in now, what was the, what was the process before? When we, when we, when we, what was the chain of custody of the ballots that were submitted? Did, did we take them to the county, or did the county send two people to Ivan City, or to the, the Veterans Home and pick that up and take it away?
So it would depend if it was a municipal election, or if it was a county election.
So municipal election.
So with, with municipal, I would be involved. I was involved with the poll workers that were involved. Actually went around to the different locations. We had poll watchers, we had several different positions that both the county and the city were involved with.
And does any of that process changed in this, the way we do things now?
No, other than the, the mail-in. It's still the same security.
Okay, great. And then, on section 4A, under indemnity, where it says, municipality shall hold harmless and indemnify basically everyone for loss, liability damage. And then it says, interesting language, or performance of this agreement, if caused by any negligent act or omission, and any intentional misconduct. So we're saying that we agree that we're gonna hold, of course, Carrie, I know we're gonna do a wonderful job here, but just kind of being watchful from the citizen's standpoint. I'm putting my trust, I'm making my voice, it's one of our fundamental rights to vote. That has to be secure through every step of the way. Let's say we have someone go rogue at the municipality, and, and does a intentional misconduct, that, I don't think we should be held harmless for that. It's just my personal opinion. So I don't know if this is language we have to adopt from the county, or if this is state law, or if this is something we can amend.
Dale?
I don't believe we should be held harmless.
What would happen? I mean, there would be prosecution, whether the city's held harmless or not.
I just need to understand it better. That's why I'm asking.
It's drafted by the county attorney's office, and it goes both ways. So the, the same language is for the municipalities hold harmless, and the counties hold harmless.
Right, I see.
And so it's mutual. And so.
But I just don't like that word intentional misconduct. To me, that is not okay.
Yeah, but Dennis, we're holding the city harmless.
Not, not the individual.
The individual doesn't get a go-scott-free. We, as a city, we wouldn't get any, if we didn't hold them harmless, we wouldn't have anybody out there to do it.
Is that clear?
That's how I read it.
That's how I understand that.
Yeah.
Paragraph.
That's, to me, that's intent.
Yeah, okay, indemnifying the municipality.
Yes, it holds the municipality and the county harmless, meaning that we're not liable for someone going rogue.
Rogue.
That, that individual will face the consequences of prosecution individually. Carrie, do you have any idea what the, what that burden is on someone who violates election law?
It would be whatever is under state law as far as prosecution. So it could be felony, class A, class B, just depends on what the state is classified.
But the county prosecutor would, would take that on, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
I wouldn't say.
Otherwise, without that language, you're basically saying that.
I think.
The city, the city would be opened up to liability for someone doing what you're suggesting.
Right. Which would incentivize us to be sure we're 100% secure. I mean, again, but thank you, I'm trying to understand this, that's why I'm asking the questions. So going back one more time, and then we'll let Dale leave. So the, letter A, the municipality shall hold harmless and indemnify county and its officers, employees and its agents. Okay, then, then that, wait, so that should have said, that should say, okay, and then the, and vice versa, municipality. But it's, and its employees. What if, what if it's an employee that commits that act? Is that a problem, or not? Like, help me out. I'm just trying to understand this clearly.
Well, it's, so if it's a municipal employee, then.
Are we saying?
Ivans is holding the county harmless for, for the wrongful act of the municipal employee. If it's a county employee, then the county is holding us harmless from.
But still, there can be criminal or whatever charges against that employee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
The thing about voting, it's for, the city doesn't gain money or lose money from, it's, it's a act that we do as a whole. And so that's why everyone's held harmless, because it's kind of a volunteer thing. So.
Yeah.
Does that, does that clear it up for you?
Yeah, it does. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions while we're on this, for the rest of you? No? Let's go ahead and move forward on it, then.
I move that we approve an inter-local cooperation agreement regarding official ballot drop boxes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we approve an inter-local cooperation agreement regarding official ballot drop boxes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going back to item 5D. Council will now discuss and consider approval of the Planning Commission's recommendation on a preliminary plan for the crossings at Red Desert located approximately 800 South Mesa Street. VE Management and Investment Company owner, Dave Lynn, applicant, Mike.
Yes, this is the parcel right here on 800 South, in Main Street. It's zoned RM. It does have a short-term rental overlay. It's buffered with also, it is a mixed-use, a mixed-zone parcel. It's a R2.6 also, which is buffering the R1.7.5 zone. So it being in the RM zone, it's required to have a certain amount of density, which is 15%. This one is at 25% with bonuses. They've added pickleball courts, tennis courts, and swimming pool, and a splash pad to get the additional 10%. and, uh, swimming pool and a splash pad to get the additional ten percent, um, bonuses. Um, TRC has reviewed this and found it to meet our zoning ordinances. Any questions?
So I, I don't remember, did, did they retain, I mean, they have the nightly rental overlay, but, but that wasn't a part of, of the, what they're asking for, correct?
The, the zone allows it, but, uh, their development agreement, I believe they're not asking for that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Type of use, but it is there.
So, so Dale, do they retain that anyway, even though they don't specifically show it in?
Dale's gone.
Right here, remember?
Oh. All I can see is you, Mike. Dale has, has faded into the wall.
So, so I believe that they do have that in the zoning, but they'd have to amend the development agreement.
They'd have to come back with a, with a request to amend the, the development application, right? To include that?
Yes, yeah.
Right, right now, they're specifically not asking for it.
Yeah.
And so, once we approve it, if they ever wanted to put it over it, they'd have to get the vote of the landowners too, you know?
Right. Okay.
And if the development agreement.
So, discussion on this? Thank you, Mike. Boy, that's a helpful little thing you've created there.
Thank Dale.
Mayor is.
Dale and his guys first started using it in our office, and we felt that it was
It's awesome.
Good for you guys too, so.
Mike, so I believe this is the only parcel that has the short-term rental overlay in the city at this point?
Yes.
Can, can we, as part of this, eliminate that overlay?
No, I don't think we can. I think Dale would say, no, we can't do that.
Because they've already come in?
This isn't a zoning amendment.
They, they filed under, under that zoning. If we, if we remove that, that is a zoning action. That would require a public hearing, go back to the planning commission.
But we can do it when we're doing the land use, because they're not asking for it now.
But if they, so if they cut, they're not currently asking to use this as short-term rental.
Yes.
But if they came in and asked to use it as short-term rental, then they're going to be able to do that. Is that correct?
They, they could come and apply.
But we would have to approve it because it is a short-term rental overlay on that site?
Well, potentially. The, the problem is that if, if any property is sold without, without the, that buyer being made aware that there is a short-term rental overlay, then they, then the, the council has all the justification to say no. Cause that's the whole point of short-term rentals being located in developments where that is specifically approved, is so that people who buy in know they're buying into, to a development that has that, uh, that has that, yeah.
Their neighbors.
So in this case, after that first lot is sold, the council could say absolutely not.
But prior to that, um, they could still come in and do that. And what I'm getting at here, I mean, I, I would really like to see that short-term rental overlay disappear. I understand that just the timing of this, it's too late. I should have thought of that a year ago. Uh, but, um, I, I've been getting some interesting emails, uh, and information about the actual operation of these short-term rentals, uh, in Santa Clara and St. George, and it seems like our codes really aren't designed to adequately, um, absorb that kind of an intense use if they went to short-term rentals. And so, I'm just going to read something. This isn't from me. I, I thought about saying this was my own, um, research and information, so I'd sound smart, but, Natalie Larson in St. George made the point that, uh, currently you only need two parking spaces for each unit. Many of these units sleep a lot more people, they have, they have more parking, parking becomes a problem. Um, there, um, should be a requirement to have garages that are tall enough, garage doors that are tall enough to accommodate a spriter van or oversized SUV. They should have twenty-foot driveways. Again, these are just because of the experiences, you know, I, I bet when we did the short-term overlay, there were hardly any of them around. We didn't know how they'd behave, how they'd operate. HOA should be required to make sure garages are cleared monthly from toys, golf cart parking is another issue. People are just using the garages for toys, and then they're parking on public streets. Um, in St. George, apparently, this isn't as big of a problem. The, the alleys are only twenty-five feet wide. Uh, often there are vehicles parked illegally on the, uh, driveways horizontally. This leaves no room for human error. If there was an event that required fire, police, or water, or other utility repairs, forty-five feet should be the minimum. This site's at thirty-eight feet. Maybe that's splitting hairs, maybe we're close enough to the forty-five on that. Um, and, and another, uh, issue is that, um, where was it? So this was, yeah, just here. I, I won't mention the property, but, um, a resident commented, Ivans resident commented that they've seen a parking problem here in Ivans, right next to a short-term rental property, because vehicles are continually parking along the street, uh, well, I would say, of Red Vista Drive off two hundred West. So again, people not, not having enough driveway space, not having, well, the wide enough roads, I think, were okay. Uh, and people just using the garages for toys instead, instead of for vehicles. Uh, Bob Morris suggested at, at the last meeting or the meeting before, that we prohibit street parking from two AM to four AM. That would help alleviate this problem. And I guess we can't make that part of this issue tonight, but we should put that on a future agenda, especially if there's a possibility that there could be short-term rentals. So it, it's, so I guess, l- looking at these sort of experiences that are happening now in other communities that have a lot of short-term rentals, it's probably too late for us to also change our building requirements for this site. Is that true?
Yes.
But can we ask the developer in the development agreement to, to do something? I mean, they don't have a whole lot of parking here, they don't have a whole lot of driveway space, and if this does go short-term rentals, then it's going to create most of the same problems that are being experienced elsewhere.
So totally agree with the point you're making. Procedurally, we, we, we cannot, um, implement a zone change on a piece of property that, that has an application on it.
Then, then, um, it, I do think that this is the only site that has a short-term rental overlay, or is there more?
Indigo Trails has one on it.
Oh, well, I want to get you on that one too, then. Um, so I would like for a future agenda item to, to pick up Bob Morris's suggestion about no parking from two AM to four AM. That, that could help alleviate the problem if we do have short-term rentals, and then maybe we need to be looking at our building codes.
So what I'd suggest is all, all your concerns are valid, right? We know a lot more about what these, how these things behave than we did before. So put it on a future agenda, amend the, the zoning ordinance and, and the requirements for anything that, that is, uh, zoned or has the overlay for short-term rentals. And then, if, if this applicant came back and applied for, to use that overlay, he'd be obligated to adhere to all of the new requirements.
Okay. And then there was one other suggestion. I thought this was, was very interesting and helps with our budget in the long term if we really want to provide, uh, park and recreation services for, for all of our population. Um, consider having, um, the amenities on this project open to all Ivans residents. This would solve your pickleball dilemma.
Yeah, but then.
Good luck with that, since you've got twenty projects around that have them who aren't gonna open their gates for you to do that.
Well, you got, they, they gotta be maintained by the city then. We're not gonna maintain, if I had one, I'm not gonna maintain it, so you can get more play in it.
Yeah, well, once again, that's a stretch, I think.
Okay. But the other issues we can bring up as a future agenda item.
So, so all of these points that you make would be most appropriately, uh, expressed in a discussion surrounding an agenda item focusing on amending the, the requirements for, uh, a short-term rental overlay.
And, and I understand the timing issue. I mean, just, you have to, yeah, yes.
So since you're, you know more about this probably than I do, the fact that they have not included that in this development agreement means that, that it is not, it is not currently allowed in this, in this project. So they would have to come back and, and apply for, uh, an amendment to the development agreement, and, uh, assuming that this, you know, that we took care of this relatively quickly.
Yes, yes, I agree that, um, if somebody was to buy one of those and try to use it as, as a short-term rental, I th, I believe the development agreement would keep them from doing that, even though they have the zone for it. Um, the development agreement spells out exactly what you can do in that, that zone. I think opening up the parking chapter is a good thing, um, and that would be where you would want to put it, because each zone has, um, different requirements, but if you put it in the parking, then it will, um, apply anytime you do, uh, short-term rentals, either in the RC zone, or the RMU zone, or the R twelve with an overlay. So if we do in the parking, um, chapter.
He's got several other points, so it's not just parking he's been talking about here, but.
But I agree. I have worked in cities where there's a lot of it, and when you park to do an inspection, you have to like walk a mile to do your inspection, because everybody is taking up the spaces plus any open area that they might be able to park, and toy haulers are the worst. And so, um, I've talked to Dale about this. We have not, we do not allow, um, storage as a use in the city, but when you're talking about these short-term rental places, we should make a developer have a place for toys, and that should also be in the parking ordinance also. So it's not just over more parking for vehicles, but also toys.
So Kerry, if you'd make note that this, the request is for this to be on a future agenda.
We'll, we'll put it on the planning commission agenda, um, just as a discussion, uh, July third.
So i- is that the council directive, is for that to go to the planning commission?
No, that's right.
Get the process started.
Okay.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, and Mayor, just for, yes, I think I am, and just for clarification, what you're saying is because the short-term rental isn't, isn't stated in the development agreement, then at this point, that's not part of, of what we're approving here, and if, if they do choose to ask for short-term rental, uh, for the overlay to be used, let's say in three months from now, but before then, we make these changes, these changes would apply to them.
Because it's a new application.
Great.
And I don't believe the development agreements approved through the city council yet, so if you want to add that language into the development agreement that says, this is not allowed, that you're, you have an opportunity still to do that.
That we can do.
That short-term rental is not allowed?
Yes.
And I kind of believe, and I don't know where we're at in this whole game, but when we do the land use plan, they're not asking for it, it's not part of the application. We should be able to take that overlay off there.
Well, that's what I would like to see, to have the overlay.
It's not part of the application, we're not taking something away they're asking for in the application.
You gotta be careful of the taking, though.
No, it's.
And you're taking, you're taking a right of way.
I understand.
Here they're not asking for that right, so we're basically saying we're, we're especially, we're not giving it to you at this time.
Yeah, and we're doing that on every.
Dale?
Every zone we do in the city, we're doing that to somebody.
Yes.
So it's, it's the same, you know, whether you do it, you know, on a zone change or whatever it is, you're doing, you're changing the, the way the land use works.
What, what I want to be clear on is the fact that they have not included this in the development agreement is essentially a forfeit of, of that overlay, for the purpose of what they intend to develop.
Yes, but it.
And would Dale agree with that?
I, I believe so.
I don't think.
I don't think you would.
Oh, really?
No, I was just gonna say, I, I'm involved with the development agreements as well, and I have not seen a development agreement on this subdivision.
But a development agreement, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Please.
A, a development agreement is a negotiated item.
It is.
And so can, can we initially put in the development agreement that the applicant agrees to terminate the overlay?
You know what? I'm gonna suggest, hate to do it, I'm gonna suggest we table this, and wait until we have legal counsel here to advise us.
Second it.
But, I mean, that wasn't a motion, I can't even make one.
I, I'll, I'll move that we table this until we have legal counsel here to advise.
And, and the reason for that is to, to explore and understand the implications of, of the overlay, and whether or not it, it is, it can be used in this, under its current application, right? Okay. Vote on that, then, all in favor?
Nobody second, nobody second.
Really?
I'd second it.
Thank you.
A discussion.
Yes.
Cause I do want, so yeah, I, I mean, I, uh, so I'm coming at this from the perspective of just the applicant, not that I would love, you know, more Santa Clara.
Call Dennis that, no.
You all know where I stand. I think I probably voted against this, uh, zoning when it passed a couple of years ago. But this, this person is bringing forth a legal application since April, I noticed, and hasn't asked for the thing that we're seeing, we're concerned about. So are we, or I guess, are we denying this person, this applicant, there, I mean, everything's, checks out, everything's legal?
Kerry's saying that we do not have a development agreement on this project, correct?
But that's not what's before us on the agenda.
Well, hold on. So they are entitled, then, without a development agreement specifically excluding the prerogative to use the short-term rental overlay?
So it's actually on for the preliminary plan, it's not on for the development agreement.
Oh, gotcha. Well.
But they are vested, because they made their application, so you can, you can ask them certain things and be negotiated, but they don't have to do what is asked, because they are vested.
Yeah.
But we are approving this preliminary plan based on their application, which says no short-term rentals.
Yes, and then, then the next step is the development agreement.
Yes.
So, okay.
Do you, do you understand what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't remember the language on the application. Kerry, would you just enlighten us, then?
Um, I actually can pull that up.
Can pull it up.
I don't think it'll say it on the application.
It doesn't.
So the only thing that is indicating that they're not asking for that is it's not showing on the preliminary plan.
And that's the plan we're approving?
Correct.
So they're, well, how would they show it? How would it be shown?
It, it would usually show, Mike, wouldn't it show as like a bubble?
Uh, so on the application, um, when the, the zone change comes, then that's when it's designated.
Which I.
Like, you're right, they are vested with that right. If you were to take away that by zoning, then, um, that, um, they, they could come back and ask that they use this for short-term at any time, but if their development agreement specifically says no or not, and they agree to that, then yes.
And that's the next step after this preliminary plan is a development agreement?
Yeah. So I, I don't believe they have the intention of using it.
Hi Dale. Hold on just one minute.
No, let's, let's hear from Dale.
Well, he was finishing his comment. Dale?
Yes.
Forgive me for bothering you, but we're stuck on, um, item, agenda item five D. We have an application for, uh, a development red, red, let's see, the crossings at Red Desert. It's, it's on a parcel of ground that, that has a, uh, short-term rental overlay.
Yes.
So the application doesn't specifically indicate that they intend to use that, and there's.
The preliminary plan.
The preliminary plan, yeah, well, the application for the preliminary plan. But, and we don't have a development agreement, which is coming up. So the concern that's been expressed is, um, are they then entitled to use that overlay even though it's not been specifically identified on the preliminary plan?
It is because it's, it was granted as part of their zoning. Now, I, I've asked that we, as we're going through changing the maps, that we remove it off the land use plan, which is where it shows short-term rental. It's not supposed to be on the land use plan at all. It's supposed to be on the zoning map as S T R O, and then the base zoning, so. But they applied for and got short-term rental on that piece as well as the one across Main Street. And so, um, as zoning, it runs with the land, and so somebody else could make their short-term rental. Now, if they want to voluntarily say it will never be used as short-term rental and as part of the development agreement, that's up to them, but right now, they're entitled to it.
So, there, there's really nothing we can do on an application that, that conforms with the zone, other than to approve it, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I, can I call you back? We hit another snag?
And.
And Mayor, I, I, that's what I thought, and I think it's to our advantage to approve this preliminary plan. Because as you're saying, they're not showing that they're calling that out in the bubble or however they would officially do that. So that you kick the can down the road. Now they're gonna come back with something and we have to comply.
I believe there's something in the concept plan and in planning commission. There's something that tells us that it, cause they made that, it's in the minutes saying they are not going to use it as short-term rentals.
Well, then that ought to be clarified in, in the development agreement, which doesn't exist yet. So that would be the city's position.
And then they, Mike, in that, in the planning commission, in the presentation, I believe they said, this will not be short-term rentals.
Yes.
And if, with them making that statement, it should give us the right to put in the development agreement.
This wasn't reviewed at TRC with that idea in front of us.
Yes.
That this is short-term rentals. So I don't believe they have the intention. And this isn't designed to, to be short-term rentals. Or, or reviewed as short-term rentals.
Say it again?
Wasn't reviewed.
Was not.
Was not reviewed.
Yes.
As a project that will have short-term rentals.
That's what I believe. So, so I think we're, we're approving this based on, when we do our, when we do our approval, and Dennis is better at this than I am, but when we do the approval, we can say based, based on the findings from the city and other meetings, cause they've ma- made that statement to us that it's not gonna be short-term rental. Then it can become part of our development agreement.
And I'm not sure you can mandate that because it's inherent in the zoning. Only if they agree to.
Yeah, but all our approvals have been based on what they've told us, which is no short-term rentals. So we're basing this whole scenario, he approved the plan not being a short-term rental.
You just heard, you just heard Dale say that, that it, the zoning is there, so. We have, we have no grounds to deny this unless it fails to conform to other elements of the zone.
But we have a right because of the previous conversations from the applicant on the other applications telling us that it's not a short-term rental.
Don't know that we have a right at the moment, not until it's written in a development agreement.
Well, you present some, if I present something fraudulent to you and you want it later, that takes away that right.
We can, uh, go back to the ordinance and look at it and make sure that it complies with short-term rental, um, rules also, and then come back with a new recommendation, one way or the other. If that's, um, how you guys feel, we should proceed.
Mayor, so I, um, I, I think that you're, you're right, the, the process at this point is they have, they're complying with everything. We can approve this tonight. What we do in the development agreement, again, it's a negotiated document, so we can put it, we can put in the development agreement that they agree not to do short-term rentals whenever that comes up, and either they'll accept it or they won't. And then also between now and hopefully soon, we can review, as, as Mike's suggesting, um, you know, our, our codes and just say, wh- what should we do about garage length, garage height and various other things, you know, how, um, extra space for toys, uh, additional parking space, or what are the other requirements? And if we get those changes done before anybody comes in and asks to use their short-term rental overlay, then that would apply, right? Those changes would. So I think, I, I think Dennis is right, just this, it's probably more prudent.
But did you hear it?
It's prudent to do it tonight, to approve it tonight and work on these other issues.
Did you hear what Mike said? He says, do you want me to take it back? Cause when he did the approval on it from a TRC standpoint, he did it as not being short-term rentals.
Correct.
So if, if there's any chance of it to become short-term rentals, he needs to go back and see if it meets that criteria.
Yeah.
Because they asked specifically on the application, it was on concept or went through the planning commission of not being short-term rentals. And so that's how he approved, as, when he makes that statement as a TRC member, he's saying it meets the criteria for not being short-term rentals, just being town homes.
Right.
And twin homes.
No, whi- which is what's represented here in the preliminary plan, therefore we should act on it.
Um, and another thing that I think we should do is, um, add a line on the application that clarifies what they're asking for. Um, and then, um, if it's on the application, then it'll be more clear. If, and it's also documented by them if they're asking for short-term rentals or not. And so if we change our form, it may, um, I, I haven't gone through this thought process um, until you guys brought it up, so I appreciate that. But if we add something on the form, maybe, maybe, uh, we'll get these answered beforehand rather than, um, going out of the box and.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna get rid of any of them because we don't have any other properties that are zoned. That, that are, that where the overlay is even allowed, right?
Yes.
So thi- this one is zoned for that, and I think at this moment in time, they have the legal right to use it that way.
Yes.
But.
If the preliminary plan matches it, they have that legal right, yes.
So we have a motion and a second.
We do. All in favor, now, the, the motion in the second is that we approve this. And so all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we've gone that far, now I guess we cross our fingers.
Aye.
Mayor, I'm gonna, if I may be excused from the meeting.
You, you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mayor indicated when he, when he arrived that he had a, uh, time that he'd have to leave.
He said eleven.
He did say eleven.
Said eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
I was in the wrong time zone.
Oh, I see. We wonder that sometimes.
Thank you. We still have, we still have a quorum present, so we're gonna continue. All right, we're gonna move to item five E. The council will now discuss and consider approval of a development agreement for Vista subdivision located at, uh, approximately two hundred north and six hundred west. R T Martin, Utah LLC, Terry Martin owner, Ryan Button applicant.
No, that's.
Oh, did I jump ship?
You jumped down.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought, that doesn't sound right. Okay, pardon me, Vista subdivision located approximately one forty-five west and one hundred south. Sally Jensen, owner applicant. Okay, thanks for correcting me. All right, Mike?
Yes, Dale, Dale reviewed the development agreement. Um, and he usually comments on it. I haven't read it personally, but it, um, it has been reviewed by Dale, so.
It's pretty.
Mayor.
Interesting stuff, yes.
Um, o- o- other development agreements are now, um, dealing with the water issue and say, this one does not deal with it, with the statement that we've agreed to start putting in, saying developer acknowledges the potential shortage of culinary and/or secondary water in the city and understands that building permits will be issued only upon water availability. That's the language that we've agreed to put in development agreements. It's missing in this one. And so I, I'd move to approve this development agreement with that addition.
And of course, it, it, since it's an agreement, that would require the acceptance of the applicant as well. So you're, you're.
But this is in, this is what we've.
Your motion would be that we amend the agreement to include that language.
Language, which.
And then that would, that would go back to the applicant to either agree to or not, correct? Okay, so you, you can do that.
Well, and this is what we are putting in development agreements now. It's just missing from this one.
I agree with you. Any other concerns about this?
Is, is the applicant here?
Oh, hi.
Would she be able to come up and?
Yeah, is that? Is that a deal killer for you?
Well, it's only two lots. We're almost done. We'll just do it and be done.
You're, you're gonna have your water, so.
Yeah.
But, but he, procedurally, he's right, that we are now faced with a situation where we've got to, to include that language to protect the city is, uh.
Even for just two lots?
You're, you're gonna be.
Right away?
Practically speaking, you're gonna be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be able to get this done?
Yes.
I just wanna be on the next city council.
We just need it for you to say yes. He can put the language in and then we go forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Glad you were here. So we, we have an implicit consent on the part of the applicant to agree to this additional, uh, language. So go ahead and make the motion then.
I thought I did, didn't I?
I didn't see it as that. Did you?
Did I, Kerry? I made the motion, didn't I?
Just make it again.
You made a case.
Okay, okay, I, I, I move that we approve. What number are we on?
Development, it's E, five E.
Uh, I, the, uh, I move that we approve the development agreement for Vista subdivision located at approximately one forty-five west and one hundred south. Sally Jensen, owner applicant, with the addition of the water language that we're putting in developments agreements, it says developer acknowledges the potential shortage of culinary and/or secondary water in the city and understands that building permits will be issued only upon water availability.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. That we approve a development agreement for Vista subdivision located approximately one forty-five west and one hundred south. Sally Jensen, owner applicant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Thank you. Item five F, council will discuss and consider approval of a development agreement for Desert Cove subdivision located approximately two hundred north and six hundred west. R T Martin, Utah LLC, Terry Martin, owner, Ryan Button applicant. Oh, hi Chuck.
Dale asked me to cover this one for him. And the reason why I'm covering on this one is because, uh, it's a pretty standard development agreement, except for paragraph fourteen, uh, that has a detention pond construction. It's that regional detention basin that we've been talking about. Uh, and the next agenda item is, uh, a reimbursement agreement, which, um, we have it on here as two separate items. And we can talk about them together if you want to.
Yeah, please do.
Dale, or Chuck, there's one other item we remember is the wall.
Councilmember Anderson, do you have a comment?
The way you've been doing that, I don't, I need to say, Mayor, okay?
You're right. Lance, Lance brings up the fact that there, there's some language in here about, um.
I just wanted to make upfront, so we know.
So, so there's, uh, the agreements that, uh, the developer has made with Terry Martin have been included in the development agreement. Uh, one of the issues that has come up is, uh, the fencing, uh, in this agreement says that the block walls should be Geneva brown. Uh, we've passed, uh, uh, I guess it's code that says that, uh, along our collector streets, we're gonna require sandstone color for our, for, for our walls. And so this is not following our standard. The code does though allow the developer to, uh, adopt a different standard if they can show that it's.
Haven't we used Geneva brown down on ninety?
On Mojave.
On highway ninety-one, we, we did write that into the code, that we would allow it on highway ninety-one. In fact, that's the color that we were saying is the required color. Uh, but everywhere else, it's supposed to be the sandstone color, which is the deeper red. But it does say that the developer can propose something different. Like we've allowed them to do a different type of wall on Center Street, on, on the Palisades, because it kind of matched the rest of their walls that they had done up Park, Park Avenue Way. Um, and so in this case, where we have a developer that wants to change the color of the wall starting at two hundred north, going north into the Cana Development.
Anybody have an objection to Geneva brown?
I guess that's the question. Does anybody have a problem with it?
No, Geneva's in Switzerland. Swit- Switzerland's neutral, so it's a neutral color, obviously, right?
Well, Geneva's in Switzerland. Switzerland's famous for chocolate. It's a chocolate brown color, so.
I have no problem, but I'll recuse myself.
Well, no, I mean.
And he recuses him? I mean, can he vote on this?
Yeah.
You have to.
Okay, I was gonna say.
It, it's, yeah.
I have no financial interest.
R T Martin is the applicant, not, not Lance.
Yeah. And if you wanna talk a little bit about the reimbursement agreement, um, we've got some estimates of the costs in there on that final sheet. So basically, uh, it's showing that there's some shared costs, but most of the costs are landing on the city. Uh, the estimate is three hundred thousand dollars for the detention basin and two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of that's landing on Ivan City. But we're asking them to put all the improvements in as part of the subdivision and then that we would reimburse them for, for those costs.
This is budgeted, right? You've got this, you've had this in mind for a long time.
Right, yep. So it's a, it's a.
Is it in the current budget?
Uh, yeah, we put it in next year's budget so that we could do it, yep.
Mayor, so, so the only question I have on the reimbursement, so that's section four. The way I read the lang, so first of all, it's a, the dollar amounts blank, which scares me, but the way I read the language, it reads to me that you've got enough protections in there for the city that it's, it's going to be a legitimate, reasonable cost. Is that how everybody else reads that section?
Right, and we can put the number in. It says an estimated cost. It's not even like a hard cost if we fill in the blank. So we could take that estimate on, uh, exhibit D and put it in there.
And that amount is?
Better than blank.
Three hundred, it's three hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, of which two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars belongs to Ivan City's responsibility.
Chuck, I, I think it, or Mayor? I think it's important to realize it's not just for the basin, it's for the road also.
That's why there's shared costs, because they're gonna be putting curb and gutter in. We don't want them to stop the curb and gutter. We want them to keep going and put the curb and gutter in front, in front of the, the basin.
It's a reasonable thing to do.
Same thing with the asphalt. We don't wanna have a seam and then we come back in with a separate contract.
They may actually be able to do it for less than the city can do it because it's part of a, part of a larger, larger scale project.
Well, I think what's important is, is the gr- the agreement with R T Martin says that he will share the cost with the city to put the asphalt, the, the, to build the half the road.
Yep.
And then the city's doing half.
This was the intent of how we would do this.
It's a regional basin.
Yeah, if, if Terry Martin was, was gonna be building it.
So instead of blank, we would say the amount of the improvements is approximately?
Yeah, it already says the total estimated amount of the improvements is blank.
Yeah.
But the total, the correct and final reimbursement amount paid to the city will be the actual cost.
Okay. So instead of blank.
You could put that estimate.
You could just put the estimate, because we already have an estimate attached. Uh, three hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-two.
Well, no, the, you'd want the city amount in there, wouldn't you?
Well, no, the total, the total, the cost of the total improvements, I think, is what it's suggesting. And then there's, there's a, there is a sharing of the cost based on, on this.
Okay, so point of order, we're actually gonna go back to the first of the two. And, uh, do we have any further questions on, on the subdivision itself? The development agreement? I read, I don't have any problem with it.
Mayor, um, I, I move that we approve a development agreement for Desert Cove subdivisions located at approximately two hundred north and six hundred west. R T Martin, Utah LLC, Terry Martin, owner, Ryan Button applicant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'll be all three. No nays? Okay, so now we'll move to the, to item five G that's already been discussed. And are you prepared to make a motion on that?
Yeah, um, my only question was the reimbursement. So I, I move that we approve a development agreement, oh, no wait, approve a reimbursement agreement for a regional detention basin located approximately two hundred north and six hundred west with the insertion of an estimated cost of three hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars in section four reimbursement.
Thank you. Did you get that, Kerry? Second?
Second.
Once again, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't hear you.
Aye.
You, you can't recuse.
I said aye.
Thank you.
Kerry got it. She smiled, no.
All right. Oh, boy. We ready for this, gang?
Which one?
Moving forward with a presentation and discussion on the planning commission's recommendation on the citywide sandbox land use plan, Ivan City applicant, Mike?
I move, we move this agenda ahead till, yeah.
Oh, let's go ahead with the presentation anyway.
Well, they'll miss it.
Hmm?
The, I, I think it's important for the other two to see it.
Oh. Solid point.
Yeah, it was just the three of us.
Do, do it, do it when we've got all five here.
Cause I'm fairly forgetful anyway, so really only two of them are gonna remember it.
We're not gonna take any action on this tonight. There's a lot to digest and talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been working on it for four months and, uh, slow process makes good legislation.
All right.
I'm good with waiting till everybody's here to do the presentation because it's good for everybody to understand it from where it started to where we're at.
The suggestion is we continue this, uh, continue this agenda item. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Moved in second, that we continue item five H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Five I, council will discuss and consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen R. A resolution of Ivan City, Utah, amending the Ivan City culinary water rate to increase all culinary water rates by ten, ten cents per thousand gallons. Uh, to pass through Washington County Water Conservancy District's wholesale water rate increase of ten cents per thousand gallons from a dollar forty-four to a dollar fifty-four per thousand gallons cheap water. Okay?
I can answer any questions, but I don't think there's much to discuss here.
Cost and thus more, we just passing the law.
When did it, when did it start or when does it start? The pass or the pass?
July first.
July first, okay.
Yep.
So we haven't lost anything. Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
I move that we approve of resolution number two thousand twenty two dash thirteen R, resolution of Ivan City Utah amending the Ivan City culinary water rate. To increase all culinary water rates by ten cents per thousand gallons to pass through. Washington County Water Conservancy Conservancy District's wholesale water rate increase of ten cents per thousand gallons. From a dollar forty four to a dollar fifty four per thousand gallons.
Thank you. Second to that?
Second.
Moved in second that we approve resolution number twenty twenty two dash thirteen R as as it has been explained. Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item five J. Council will now discuss and consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty two dash fourteen R. A resolution of Ivan City Utah amending the Ivan City wastewater rate. To pass through Saint George Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility rate rate increase of a dollar fifteen per equivalent residential unit. Chuck, any explanation on that? Hey, we're driving them, we're driving them away with.
With with rate discussions? There there's not a whole lot of discussion here other than, you know, Saint George, they've done their analysis and their analysis comes back and they say they need to charge more higher rates. They said that the reason for this is for capital facilities that they need to plan for. This isn't anything to do actually with inflation, although maybe that'll be next year.
But it probably does has to have to do with the secondary, the regional secondary water system and beginning to expand the capacity of the facilities.
I'm sure that's part of it. I know they've got some pipelines that need to be upsized. Now, most of those are usually covered by. By impact fees, but apparently they've got some other capital facilities need to be covered by rates, so. And I don't think they cover all of their in all of their capital facilities with impact fees like the water district does a percentage. So.
Any questions, council?
Mayor?
Yes.
So that right now we get charged by equivalent relevant. An E R U or E R C.
That's right.
So it's just so much hassle, no matter how big it is.
Right, so if you're just, or if you're a commercial unit or a household that's using a three quarter inch meter, you get charged the same rate. If you're using a bigger meter, then you're getting charged a higher rate.
The theory behind that is you're moving more water down through the system.
Right.
And and if if we go to our own treatment plant, well, is this money, it's gone the minute they take it, right?
Yep.
Because you said it was for capital facilities. That's why I asked that question.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Let's let's take action then, please.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty two fourteen R, a resolution of Ivan City Utah. Amending the Ivan City wastewater rate to pass through Saint George Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facilities rate increase of a dollar fifteen per equivalent residential unit.
Thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Moved in second that we approve resolution number twenty twenty two dash fourteen R as it's been explained. Roll call vote once again, please. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Moving to item five K, council will now discuss user rate and user rate increase for the next fiscal year beginning July twenty twenty two. Chuck, explain.
All right, so this one's a little tricky. So at the beginning of the pandemic, so well, let me back up. So so we approved our rates. Back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, whenever that was.
So what rates? Be specific.
Well, for the water and the sewer, we approved a rate schedule that says this year we're going to be this rate and then the next year we're going to bump up, next year we're going to bump up, next year we're going to bump up. So we had this rate schedule. I've included that in in your documents here, those those rate schedules. But at the beginning of the pandemic. We felt like it was inappropriate to raise rates. And so we got one, we got one, one year behind, starting in twenty twenty. Then the next year we bumped it up just one level and not not back on to schedule. We think it's probably appropriate now, especially with all the inflation that we've seen, to go ahead and try to get back on schedule instead of just bump up one year. I talked to Dale and even though he felt like administratively, we probably could do that, that he felt like it was a better policy to run that past the city council and get some advice. On whether you guys agree that that's a good idea. So it's not, I don't know that you're really making a vote on this other than. I think we're just looking for a discussion from the city council. If the council kind of agrees that it's a good idea to go ahead and skip. That year that we we didn't raise rates a couple of years ago, then we would, we would go ahead and and do that.
Yeah, my only comment is unless the city is desperate for that for that additional revenue. That that we stay on track because you brought up the point of inflation. This is a modest amount, right, but. To suggest that at a time of high inflation is a good time to throw this in, might be just the reverse of of what's actual.
Well, we don't, I mean, obviously, you know, we've got our budget. Our budget says we're okay. But, you know, there's there's risks. We we put these rates in there based on a study and it was not including the amount of inflation that we received.
What's the overall revenue difference?
Uh, so I guess I didn't look up the whole overall revenue difference, but if you look at the attachment and let's just look at the water rate. The base rate is instead of being increased by four and a half, four point seven percent, we'd increase it by nine point seven percent. So the base rate would go from eighteen dollars and seventy eight cents to twenty dollars and sixty cents. It would go up two dollars per month. Uh, and then the the bottom rate, uh, so the first seven thousand gallons, right now we charge two dollars and thirty five cents per thousand gallons. And if we just went up one year, it would go up to two dollars and fifty four cents, but instead we'd go to two dollars and sixty four cents, so it's additional ten cents. So that's instead of an eight percent increase, it would be a twelve percent increase. And then, you know, just going down the line, instead of a ten percent increase, it'd be a seventeen percent increase instead of a nine percent on the next tier down. Instead of a nine percent increase, it would be a seventeen percent increase. So if, you know, depends on how much water you use, on how much that's going to change the revenue, you know, but it's probably, you know, just looking at the numbers. Most people use about an average of maybe fifteen, ten thousand gallons a month. You know, I I think you're going to see an increase instead of like maybe an eight percent increase, you're going to see maybe a twelve or percent increase.
But in dollars.
So so the flip side to what I just said is that that our water is too cheap anyway. We just added ten cents to it. So how's the council feel about that? I.
Mayor, I I appreciate your issue about inflation. Yes, it's it's impacting us, so we want to charge more to cover for that. But it's also impacting our residents. But we've we've already done, and I'm sensitive to that, but we've already done a delay because of COVID. Now you do another one. And and then you run into the dilemma at some point in the future where you will have to do all this catch up. And it would be a much bigger increase. That that would be a hard, a hard pill to swallow, I think, so I'm I'm game for doing this, the.
Well, actually, we're at the end of our our rate schedule, so as part of this master planning that we're going to be doing next year, we're going to be doing a new rate schedule.
And your hope is that we would start from where we plan to end.
Right.
Yeah, so mayor, I I noticed in my water bill when I lived in Cliffros, it's about three thousand gallons a month is all I used. And in Mojave, I use about five thousand because I have more plants. So if you did ten thousand, what's the dollar increase? It's two.
Wow, you don't use very much water, Lance.
Huh?
Need to shower more often.
It's a long one. I, the mayor says I gotta slow down on the hot water, you know, and let it run down the drain.
So if you were using ten thousand gallons.
Yep.
Uh, so your average price would be about maybe maybe thirty dollars on the water plus the twenty dollars, so you're probably a fifty dollar bill.
And what are we paying now?
You'd be so maybe maybe ten percent less than that, so maybe forty five dollars, you know, it'd be from forty five to fifty or something like that.
And if you went to eat at Wendy's, it costs you seven dollars more, no?
Buy a bottle of water and.
They charge you twenty five cents for the one cup of water.
So I've heard two opinions. Jenny, yours?
So to your point, you're saying we would be behind again. We would just still just be one step behind.
Still just be one step behind. We wouldn't be two steps behind, but. Yeah. And again, we're going to do a rate study, so if we're showing that. That was a bad idea, we'll learn that real quick when we do the rate study.
Or if it was a bad idea not to do it.
Or, yeah.
When when would the rate study be done?
You know, it's probably going to take a year to get through that because we kind of get through, we kind of do the whole process. We do the whole master planning and then the rate study kind of lands at the end.
And and what's what's the impact to the city if we don't do this increase? I mean, are we? Does that have a budget impact or are we?
Well, it's a revenue, yeah, it's a revenue.
But but are we? Are we break even? Is the is the gold always break even on this or?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we we aren't turning profit, right?
And are we at a loss right now because we didn't do the COVID period rate?
Right now, we're budgeted and I I wish I wish Cade was here, but, you know, we are budgeted. We don't, we don't budget a loss. No, we're not budgeting a loss.
But we just raised the rate. Is that built into the budget, the increase of rate for the gold?
Um, you know, I don't do the revenue side when I do my budgets for the water system, so I assume that, I'm going to assume that Cade. Has a rate increase in there and honestly, I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure he just probably did the the single tier.
And this is your recommendation to do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kenny?
I'm just, I'm just worried, you know, I mean, obviously, I don't have really the data to say that we absolutely have to do it. I don't even have Cade here to, and maybe maybe we do the single tier increase and we can bring Cade back or something like that. I think we need to do at least.
This is a short term change anyway, because once the new study is done.
Rates might go down.
We're going to have, you never know what's going to happen. This isn't a long term penalty.
And that would be my recommendation then, since we've already added the ten cents, let's just keep with our tier instead of bumping it up to. Stay where we're at.
Oh, so you would suggest we do not amend the rate study or amend the.
And mayor, I I'm sort of inclined to go with that too, but maybe, I I guess I'd like to understand is what's the financial impact? Will this be break even or how much is it going to lose in the next year if we don't take action?
Would it hurt to continue and get information?
No, he's gone.
He's gone.
Or just for another.
Would it hurt as mayor to to get, wait next till next meeting?
Yeah.
And gather more information?
I will say the problem with that is that we're going to bump the rates by ten cents next month. And then there'll be another, it won't be all one rate increase, it'll be multiple.
Oh, you want to start at June thirtieth is what you're saying?
Right.
I mean, July first.
Right.
I I'm, I would be inclined to do the whole thing right now because I, that's not even catching up with inflation.
Well, we're still bumping it up a tier. We're just not bumping it up two tiers. So I say we just do the ten cents plus one more tier instead of going two tiers up.
I'd probably do.
Is that a motion?
I'll support you.
Well, there's going to have to be three votes either way, gang, so.
Yeah, I I support that.
I'll support you too.
Okay, all right, we'll just do, we'll just do the single tier and and I can, we can talk, I'll talk to Cade and see if, see if it, if it gives us a depth set, maybe we'll come back and.
I second Jenny's motion.
Well, I didn't really give a motion, but.
And I don't know that, I don't know that it needs a motion.
Discussion.
It's a discussion because it's an administrative, I think it's administrative action, really. It's not a legislative action.
Why bring us in?
No. Okay, you've you've heard from your council. All right. Oh, boy. Continued discussion regarding exterior exterior building color, L R V.
I'm going to move.
Can we table that?
Well, hold, 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 hold. Well, you know what? That presentation ought to go to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, make that a motion, would you? Or did you?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we table the discussion on the continued exterior building color conversation.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second that we continue item five L, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is is N, item five N.
Mayor, I I move that we table this discussion regarding ideas and activities to celebrate Ivan's hundred year anniversary. This is something Dennis brought up and I would like him, I think he has some ideas and I would like him to be present.
Second.
Great way to avoid going to midnight.
We're we're just moving everything to when Dennis is here.
All right, I heard a motion, right?
Second.
And second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's gone too. Consent agenda.
Mayor, I I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Moved in second, we approve the consent agenda, all in favor.
Mayor, some discussion?
Okay.
So I I did send Carrie some very minor, just typo changes. They they're not substantive at all.
For both, both items?
For both, for both items.
Then just amend your, your your motion to include amendments.
Okay, that's what I did. I I oh, I say that so I amend my motion to include the the changes that I sent to Carrie.
And I can second that still.
Good on the second, all right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Council reports, Councilmember Scott?
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I got a question. One, we talked about for our, the caller discussion about talking about bringing forth an ordinance about height. To help control that and I think we kind of forgot about that.
Oh.
So I want to bring that back up on the.
Did you get that, Carrie? A discussion on the. Potential zone, not zoning amendment.
Ordinance.
Development ordinance amendment regarding building heights. Twelve feet.
And and that's to help with the the.
It the intent.
To help our, to help our guidelines.
It's it's to drive, it's to drive developments to.
To our guidelines, yes.
To development agreements. That then can specify color.
Should that conversation originally the planning commission?
Should.
Yes.
Okay, so. They'll need to understand the motivation.
Yeah.
Okay. I I do see in the near future, maybe another joint meeting with what's coming forward with general plan, everything else. And so maybe that's something we could talk at a joint meeting, something that you would like to see that work on. So it would come from them, from you guys to them and they understand the direction Lance Lance wants to go.
Or mayor, I.
Also have that joint meeting.
Not not Lance, we.
Or the city council as a whole. So we could also kick off the general plan discussion also like we did the land use discussion.
I'm good with that.
Exactly what direction we want to go and then start setting the timeframe.
Okay.
Then there was two comments that were.
I had Mike.
I was still talking.
Mayor, or I I I could summarize either written or attend the planning commission and just explain to them where this building height issue came from. And I do have this other agenda items that I want to add for the future. I could also explain that to them.
So I actually, I'd actually like to do it what Mike is suggesting.
Joint.
That, Mike. And the reason is that as we go into the discussion on on the general plan. I think that that it would be helpful for the council to sort of give some focus points on that. I've had discussions with one or more of the planning commission members just individually. And they're they're actually looking for some council guidance on this, so.
So mayor?
Yeah.
Would we, would it be wise for us to put an agenda item, an agenda item on to discuss those points before we get to there? Of what we were, what our goals as a city council are for the general plan?
Maybe, but I I think individually, you know, the council members are going to have parts of the of the general plan that they're concerned about, which would come up in inevitably in discussion in in a council meeting. And I'm not sure, but what in a in a casual meeting like a work meeting, that everyone wouldn't be free to bring up any issues that they saw.
Only if you allow me to talk.
When have I told you no?
Mayor, but by having this as an agenda item, it does keep it front and center.
Yeah.
Because we we talked about it a couple of months ago, right, and then we forgot, so.
Well. Yeah, you're the council. You can have it on on a agenda. If you'd, if you'd rather do that before a work meeting, I'm fine with that too. And I think I heard you say that's what you want.
Mayor, are we at future agenda items?
Well, we're getting there really fast.
I believe it's still Lance's turn to finish his report.
Yes, it is.
I forgot, but I'm going to make two comments anyway. I thought it was interesting when the mayor was talking about fire, he says, hold their feet to the fire. And then I thought it was interesting when Cade says, beat a dead horse. I wanted to know if he beat a live horse.
He's not here to answer that, fortunately. Jenny?
I have no report.
Thank you. I'm going to forego one too. All right.
Did Mike have?
Have no reports.
Did I pass you over?
I don't remember.
Yeah, you started down here.
I started.
No report?
No report.
Thank you, so now it's official. Thank you, so now it's official. All right, Kerry, you wanna fill in for Dale, you got anything you wanna add? Thank you. Future agenda items, I think we've described, right?
Mayor, just, just, may I just summarize them, so, um, I, I'd like as a future agenda item, uh, to discuss Bob Morris's suggestion that we prohibit street parking from two AM to four AM. And I'd like a separate agenda item, or same agenda item, uh, that would look at, uh, requirements for short-term rentals, which would include potentially increasing parking, increasing, uh, garage door heights, um, finding places for, um, you know, recreational vehicles and, and other toys, and, uh, sufficient places for, for garages. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, for, for garbage, uh, garbage collection was another thing, I forgot to mention that, came up a bunch. Uh, and the length of driveways, for, again, all for short-term rental.
So Mike, all of these would originate with the planning commission, you have a, you have a quorum here, you could simply direct those to the planning commission right now.
I'd do that.
If the council agrees.
And I'll summarize it for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it sounds like we're gonna have one quick discussion on the general plan at a council meeting before we have, have a work meeting. But these items specifically could, could go directly.
Could move quickly. Does that have to be a motion, or?
Uh, no, it's just a direction from the council.
Thumbs up.
If you all agree, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did we need to discuss any further the, um, benches situation, was that going to a further agenda?
When, when Benny gives his report at the next meeting, I'll ask him to bring the picture, he's researched it, he's found a bench.
I think he sent it to us.
Yeah, I did.
Y'all get it?
Yeah.
So that's probably a future agenda item then.
Yeah, that's what I would suppose.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Kerry, let, let's address that specifically. All right, that cover up? You guys wanna talk about? All right, no, no cause to adjourn to a closed meeting, so a motion to adjourn, please.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any opposed? Didn't think so.
My goal is every meeting that I'm here, Mike.
Good night.
Okay, sorry, I forgot, Lance.
No, you want, you wanna take, uh, Shane's place, huh?
I did the planning commission every time. For all those years.
Thank you, Chuck, thank you, thank you, Mike, thank you, Kerry.
Thank you, Barry. And thank you, audience.
Thank you, Mr. Appel.
So we can plan around and round on this, uh, proposed modern housing. Yet the state hasn't given us a direct number. The city needs.
True, not yet.
So, if they were able to do that, it'd be a lot easier to figure that out. And if this state is actually proposing that the city has to do that, and land is.